Let us come to order. Commissioner Lister, will you please lead us in this evening's invocation?
Oh, well, Mr. Mayor, please rise and join me in prayer. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we welcome you here today and thank you for the blessings given each of us. We ask that you touch our hearts so that each of our stories takes us closer to the kingdom that you have prepared for us. We ask that you strip away the worries about tomorrow and strip away the regrets about yesterday and focus on today. Focus our thoughts on you, how much you have given, and how much we have to give. Your love is unending, and we struggle to stay close, looking to you for everything: direction, wisdom, joy, companionship, and, yes, salvation. All of these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Palladino?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gobahi?
Here.
Commissioner Lister?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any additions or corrections? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gobahi?
Here.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Mayor Palladino?
Yes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
I so move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any comments from staff? Is there any comments from the commission? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Mayor Palladino? Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gobahi?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, just so that the record reflects that Commissioner Poe did contact the city and her husband did have a medical issue today, and she has to be absent or have an excused absence this evening.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Mayor, maybe for the, our late arrivals, if you want to speak to any item on the agenda, you need to fill out a green comment card. It needs to be specifically on the agenda. If it's not on the agenda, you still need to fill out a green comment card, and you can speak to it generically, if you will, under public comment. But no matter what, you have to fill out a comment card if you would like to speak tonight.
All right. At that time, we can go ahead and do presentations. The first presentation is the Pinellas County Certificate of Recognition for the City of Madeira Beach Fire Department. And I believe I have firefighter Ryan Roberts with us here today. Or should I say firefighter, paramedic? I'll meet you at the podium, because I've got a couple of things for you tonight.
LT, why don't you all come up here? Because this is, I thought this was outstanding from the Pinellas County. This certificate of recognition, Pinellas County EMS and Fire Administration hereby commends the City of Madeira Beach Fire Department, Fire Station 25, for your dedication and commitment to the citizens of Pinellas County by achieving the superior turnout time for 2015. The crews at Fire Station 25 attained a comp, uh, excuse me, a percentage of ninety-one percent. And guys, I'll tell you what, ladies and gentlemen, the Madeira Beach Fire Department is the only department in Pinellas County who has achieved this. So, guys, congratulations. Getting to be the president of the EMS Advisory Board, guys, all brought me a lot of pride today this came out, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
What are we doing?
All right. You got, you want a pastor? Well, hands don't go down where I go. You got the proclamation. Uh, next up is the proclamation. Whereas the City of Madeira Beach, Florida is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting the City of Madeira Beach, and whereas in one-fifth of all homes with smoke alarms, the smoke alarms are not working, and whereas three out of five homes, uh, excuse me, three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without smoke alarms, thirty-eight percent, or within working smoke alarms, twenty-one percent, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas many Americans don't know how old the smoke alarms in their homes are or how often they need to be replaced. Whereas the age of a smoke alarm can be determined by the date of its manufacturer, which is marked on the back of the smoke alarm. Did everybody hear that? Because I did not know that till I just read this. Whereas the 2016 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Don't Wait, Check the Date, Replace Smoke Alarms Every Ten Years," therefore I, Travis Palladino, the mayor of the City of Madeira Beach, do hereby proclaim October ninth, nine fifteen, two thousand sixteen, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city. Once again, being recognized for Pinellas County, guys, on your turnout times, I believe you're the only fire department with a turnout clock sitting there. If you ever get a chance to go to the fire department, you'll notice a little digital clock right there on the wall. And I've been there when you get calls, and I see you guys putting on your bunker gear. You're looking at the clock to make sure you're in and out of the station, because those couple of seconds makes a difference. So, thank you very much from everybody in Madeira Beach and Pinellas County.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And please, everybody, forgive me. I'm not sick. It's just my sinuses are killing me ever since that red tide rolled through. Next staff updates. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, under item number one, I'm just acting as moderator. Um, it's this time of year that you do a evaluation on the city clerk. Um, you all did those individually and handed them in. They're included in your packet. Um, I don't think it's an exaggeration to say that they are fantastic marks, as usual. Uh, I, I find it very easy to work, uh, with your city clerk and along with your, uh, city attorney. Um, we have budgeted this year four percent raises, um, cost of living increases for the employees, and at this time, you are at liberty to offer her that, less or more. Um, she's certainly worth all of that and, and even more. Uh, Amy takes her job, uh, pretty seriously. And, um, just speaking as her counterpart, not her supervisor, um, she does a fantastic job. And, you know, part of my presentation from later is the state of the records that Madeira Beach had three years ago. And when Amy came into the job, I think she was ready to pull her hair out, and that's why I was encouraged by the fact that you were considering her as the city clerk, because she's crazy about that. Everything has to be perfect, and if it's not perfect, she goes home and doesn't sleep and comes back to work in the morning. And I appreciate that, because then I know everything's done right. So, um, not giving a recommendation on your city clerk, but from your city manager's standpoint, you couldn't ask for a better city clerk, and she's certainly worth anything that you offer her tonight.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And, uh, Madam City Clerk, uh, you've received my report, and once again, an outstanding job. I, especially a lot of high marks on working with staff and working well with other people, because that's what counts, working, you know, working with the other teams and working with the city manager. So, thank you very much. Any other commissioners have any comments?
I just wanted to make a remark to Amy, that, uh, she's accomplished a lot of the, uh, goals that she's set forth since last year, as our conversation. She does have new goals coming up for this year that she's working on, and I know she'll get those done, too. Uh, Amy's always been there when I needed her, had questions. She was always there to help me, and I appreciate it. I really do, Amy. You're worth it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make a motion that, uh, Amy get the four percent raise that the other employees are going to get. Can I go ahead and make that motion before I tell you that she is, uh, a wonderful city clerk? And if you look at the, uh, you know, the forms that are filled out here, I think I'm the only one that put meet expectations. Everybody, you know, exceeds expectations. And, and Amy, you know, I, you know, I love you. I, I do. And, and you do a fantastic job for me. You do, you do all of my travel, you know, everything you get together for me, and, and I just pick it up and, and run. And you don't know how much I appreciate that. It really is fantastic. So, you're doing a great job, and you worked for the city for thirty years before you became the city clerk. So, there's seriously nothing that, that I could tell you, that you don't even know about the city of Madeira Beach. You know much more than, than I know about the city. And I appreciate what you do. And again, I, uh, I do hope that the other commissioners feel that, uh, that we can give you that same four percent raise. I appreciate it.
I also like to dovetail with, uh, the other commissioners have said every time I've seen Amy and spoken with her, and I'm typically there on Fridays and, uh, spend a lot of time with her. She's always on top of her game. She's really, really good. Appreciate, um, all the hard work, and she's very personable. She's very professional. Couldn't ask for a better employee.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there, uh, any further comments from the commission? Is there any further comments from the audience? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
You, Mayor.
Mr. Kocheck.
Mr. Kocheck, can I interrupt you and ask you just to speak into the mic for the people at home?
Amy, of course, you know, I've seen her since she started and all, the tremendous work that she does and all. Uh, the thing that I would like to address is, is there seems to be some residents in the city who seem to feel that request for public records just to aggravate the board of commissioners or the staff is, is something that's a positive thing to do. It's not. All it does is make work for, for Amy. All it does is, is just take her time away from doing things that are important. Uh, what I would request is, is the people that do this to think twice. If you want to aggravate somebody, aggravate the board of commissioners. That's what they got elected to do, and that's fine. But please, leave the staff alone. It does nothing to further any cause by having frivolous, uh, requests for public records. All it does is waste taxpayers' money and time, and especially Amy's. Thank you.
Is there any further comment? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
I would just wanted to say thank you to all of you for your kind comments, and I'll continue to try to do my best and serve you and the citizens to my best ability.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I hate to interrupt, but I've got two text messages from media outlets. Uh, no one can hear at home, so if everybody can just speak clearly into your mic, and especially at the podium, we say this every meeting, we're going to get the mic replaced. But tonight, you got to really get that mic close to your mouth so everybody can hear at home. Thank you.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Vice Mayor Gobahi?
Yes.
All right. If you'd like to continue, Mr. City Manager, with item number two?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Uh, the Pinellas County Annual Update of the Local Mitigation Strategy, I'd like to hand that off to Michelle Ord, your Planning and Zoning Director.
In two thousand fifteen, the City of Madeira Beach adopted Resolution Two Thousand Fifteen Ten. In coordination with the Pinellas County LMS Working Group, uh, we meet often to update that, uh, report. And what this is today is just the, um, yearly annual update of our LMS. Just needs, uh, Commissioner approval.
Is there any questions from the commission?
No.
Is there any other updates on that, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir.
All right. Uh, would you like to continue with item number three, the Boca Seega Stormwater Project?
I think we need to...
Oh, okay.
Motion to accept that. Just to accept it, I think is the motion to accept. Also move.
Yes.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further comments from staff? Is there any further comments? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gobahi?
Yes.
May I, uh, Commissioner Poe? Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
All right. Want to go ahead and forward with, uh, Michelle, do you want to go forward with the Boca Seega project update?
That's, that's, Marcy's going to take that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Give me one second here. I brought visuals.
Mr. Mayor and the commission and those in the audience, just for sake of introduction, this is Marcy Forbes. She, she works hand and glove with us, uh, here at the city. She works for, uh, Al Carrier at Doolin Associates. Uh, but she's been working, uh, uh, with Dave. Uh, she's the, uh, engineering, um, representative, so to speak, on the Boca Seega Road Project. Uh, Dave and Marcy are spending a lot of quality time together out in the field and making it happen out there. And, uh, today, we just wanted to make sure, we hadn't done this in the past, we wanted to make sure that we gave you an update on where we're at on the project and nuances that we've been experiencing and, and timelines and those associated type things. So, Marcy, if you're all set, the floor is yours.
Thank you for killing time till I got that working. Um, I just, I just wanted this to really be a brief update about the project, um, mainly for your constituents, so you can keep them posted on some of the things that are going on. Here you see in the turquoise, that's the portion of the project that's going to get full-depth asphalt replacement. The yellow portion are all going to receive the pervious concrete, and the purple section will be getting most likely the millinery surface. Um, the project is including the paving I've just spoke of, as well as increasing stormwater pipes and lining the ones that we can't cut and remove. Currently, the areas that you see there that have been kind of grayed out over the yellow, they actually have pervious concrete in place. So, I don't know if any of you have gotten the chance to go drive around, but it's pretty neat. I suggest you do it during a rainstorm. It's kind of cool. Um, the way the contractor's working, just to let you guys know, is they're basically working from the north, and they're going to bring themselves out towards One Thirty-Third. There's not many ins and outs to the project. So, what they're going to do is go from the north and work their way to One Thirty-Third, hop over to the south, then work their way to One Thirty-Third, and then just back right out of the project. That prevents them from driving over the new stuff that they've put in place. Um, as most of you know, there's a lot of staging going on along One Thirty-Second. Um, that is part of their process. Unfortunately, most of you know this is a very tight area. Um, so we've had to take up a pocket park, some intersections, and, um, it, it has been inconvenient. There's no two ways about it, but we are addressing all the complaints we get, um, as quick as we can and trying to explain the reason why we have selected these locations. I do believe because of how the contractor has staged themselves throughout the project, they are moving at a really fast rate. And I didn't want to say that, because I don't want to jinx anything. So, um, hopefully that'll continue. Wanted to show you, um, Mayor Palladino asked me about, um, I think some people think we've put dirt on top of the roadway. I wanted to show you how thick the asphalt is because of all the years of overlay. Um, normally asphalt would be only two inches. In some cases, it's twelve inches or more. So, versus coming through with a, um, front-end loader and trying to, you know, drag it up that way or a backhoe, the contractor decided to mill and resurface in place. So, that's why you get this look. They actually have a machine that comes over and just actually grinds it up in place. That way, when they're ready to come over the road, they can just literally scoop it up with the front-end bucket. Makes it a lot easier. They are running water trucks over that to keep the dust down, but, um, it is a little messy. So, um, they are trying to keep it wet, keep it clean. You can see they're using the, um, right-of-way area here for storage of the pipe, um, trying to be very respectful of people's property as they move through, um, communicating with the property owners about timing. Um, most questions we get from the homeowners are, you know, when are you going to be in front of me? When do I get to drive on my property? Um, so those kind of general questions. I'll show you a brief video here. I'm trying, I won't try to geek out too much on the project and how cool I think it is. But here's how the pervious concrete's placed. Basically, it comes out of the truck, and they don't really compact it, because you don't want to. Obviously, you want it to continue to drain. So, they begin placing it, and that steel truss that you see keeps it level and continues to run across it as they place it. The steel drums are giving it light compaction and kind of levels it out. And as you can see, it's keeping it wet, keeping the rollers on it. So, that's how, that's how it's going into place. I have a lot more minutes of that if you guys want to get up with me later. I'm sure you're very interested in seeing some of that footage. I wanted to give you a profile. This is the six inches of the pervious. Below this, you have a crushed, um, or a washed, crushed concrete. The theory is, is when the water hits the pervious, it drains through the concrete, drains through the bedding here, passes through a filter fabric, and then into native soil. Does two things that are pretty neat. Obviously, it helps get the stormwater off the road really quick. The neat thing it does is it treats it. Prior to hitting Boca Seega Bay, the water goes through this process and then trickles down into the groundwater. And once it's discharged into Boca Seega Bay, it's much cleaner than it would have been otherwise. And technically, the whole Boca Seega Peninsula there will actually become an entire stormwater treatment area, and there's really no other place that has that. So, it's, it's a very, um, it's a very cool project, um, for lack of a better description. Um, this is one of the poured roads. I believe this is Second Street. Um, so this is it in place. People are actually able right now to drive, I believe, fully over First and Second, uh, full-rate trucks. Um, takes three days, and we can get lightweight trucks, um, or, uh, lightweight vehicles. And after that, after seven days, we can get heavyweight vehicles. And we've tried to, you know, communicate that with the property owners. You'll also notice here they've got new concrete aprons, which makes it look really nice and helps the road function, um, like it's designed to, to treat the stormwater, um, and get it run, get the runoff. And I think that's the end of my slides. Um, so, again, it was just designed to be a brief update. Uh, like I said, they are kind of moving pretty good with their schedule. I expect that they'll be able to meet the three hundred sixty-five days pretty easily at this point.
Outstanding, Marcy. And I know, uh, Commissioner Lister, I hear you walk it daily, and I've taken a couple of trips down there. And, Marcy, I appreciate you answering my questions, because I know over years, it just had been paved over, paved over, and that's why you were getting a lot of lake and ponding in a lot of areas. And watching it actually rain the other day, I went down and kind of checked it out, and it's, it's amazing.
It's pretty impressive.
And look, and I've heard from a few residents that I got, thank you, Dave, uh, I know that y'all two have been working very hard. Uh, staff's been working hard with some, uh, you know, questions and parking issues and, uh, you know, like, all the things I've heard has come back excellent. But working with homeowners with the aprons and some people that wanted extended driveways, I heard the contractors have done a fantastic job of working. So...
They have.
But looking at it, and the thing I like, it's so much wider looking now. If you look at an old, uh, section of road over there and where it is now, so now you've actually got enough room for two-way traffic and pedestrians.
Exactly, exactly.
So, uh, you know, Commissioner Lister, I'll see the job in District One there. It's a long time coming.
It was, it was. And I've get a lot of wonderful comments from everybody that's in the, uh, in the, uh, community. But I was driving through the other day, and I noticed how the, uh, intersections seem to be twelve to fourteen inches higher. Are the intersections going to be lowered at all, or are they just going to be humped up like that?
Yeah, they will, they will be lowered as they begin to work their way out of it. They will connect with the crossing streets, and those will become completely flat. Right now, again, just, we have tried to, to level it out as much as possible. Um, some of it has to do with runoff and how they've kind of banked up some of the material to prevent it from completely washing the sand over. So, we do, we do stay on the contractor daily about access and trying to make sure if, if you go right and there's, there happens to be a, a big hump, we make sure when you go left, there's not one. So, we're trying to, to work with people, because some people do have, you know, low, low cars, and it, and it is an issue. So, we, we, we have addressed it and deal with that the best we can.
Fantastic. I know you, you've addressed most everything. I know before this started, we had three community meetings, and some people came up and learned about what we were trying to do. So, I really appreciate you keeping everybody informed, and the pace is absolutely amazing. It really is. It's very good. And it's because we planned this out. Everything's been planned out from, from the beginning. So, thank you for your planning, and I thank you to the contractors. I, I talked to them, too. Thanks, Marcy.
Thank you, guys.
Actually, Marcy, one more thing, and, uh, you know, I had a discussion with Mr. Marzicano. I believe that the state, uh, was it the VP or who was down there for, uh, the stormwater, actually, uh...
We had FDEP for our, uh, five-year audit, and, um, it was, uh, very positive. Uh, they were very impressed with the project. So, it went very well.
You guys are really good. And I should mention that the project that we're working on now, the, uh, Boca Seega, is a, um, we are working with Southwest Florida Water Management District, so they are a partner with this project. And, um, that's a testament to how much they believed in what we were doing and how, how much of a benefit it would be.
Marcy, thank you. Is there any further comments from staff, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Uh, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept a report.
I so move.
And I want to give a shout-out to Amy. She's awesome. Thank you. She's done a great job.
Much appreciated.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further, uh, comments from the commission? Is there any further comments? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gobahi?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
All right. Uh, next review of ICMA ruling regarding the city manager's ethics complaints. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, I, I regret having to come to you with this tonight. Uh, you know, early on in this whole endeavor, if, if I knew we would be sitting here tonight like this, we obviously would have made some different decisions, both me and, and maybe the commission as a whole. But, uh, we are here tonight. So, um, included in your packet are a number of documents that I want to reference. One is a letter that I wrote to you, um, kind of outline what happened. Um, there's a letter from attorney Andy Salzman doing the same thing. He represented me in front of the ICMA, uh, Executive Board. Then there's actually a Code of Ethics with Guidelines, and I want to reference that later on throughout this. Um, there's also a letter, um, or a, an article from another city in regards to an ICMA member that was active during the, uh, during the Executive Board meeting. Um, then, uh, again, the ICMA Code of Ethics with Guidelines, and then finally, I believe, uh, the letter that the, uh, the electo officials, uh, received. So, um, I don't want to be long-winded, and, you know, I, I think there are some people here that want to talk about this, uh, in the public as, as well it should, it should be. And I think I want to start by telling everybody, I respect the ICMA. I, it's a, an organization that I, I belong to since I came to, uh, Madeira Beach. It's, it's an elective organization. It's not a requirement in my contract. Um, however, I, I use them quite sparingly. Um, I think I went to one or two of their educational-type things. Um, but if, if you read their language, and I've been, uh, made fun of, because I always say, you know, I ask people to dumb it down, uh, they do use some pretty ambiguous language in, in their guidelines. And I had that analyzed by an attorney. Now, when, in their language, in their, their guideline, or in their tenant and in their guideline, frankly, it doesn't say, "Now, reference previous case law" or "Contact ICMA for a ruling." In fact, I kind of made the argument, if I have to contact the ICMA every time I have to make a decision, why do you have any tenants at all? I'll just call you, and you can tell me whether or not it's right, right or wrong. And I don't mean to be facetious or cocky about that, but it's, it's, it's the case. So, I, I, I just want to go back in time a little bit. You know, you, you guys brought me here. I, I've been doing this since I was nineteen. In fact, I sat in the exact same seat you guys are sitting in right now at age nineteen. I, I've been doing this for a long time. I know the nuances of politics. And so, when this began, I knew that this was going to be an uphill battle. In fact, it might have been a battle that I could never even have started. But, um, I, I want you to know, like I said, I, I've been, uh, elected from the years nineteen ninety-seven to nineteen ninety-nine. I was the county administrator in a large county in Wisconsin at the tender age of twenty-one. I mean, I, I've been doing this. I, I, you know, if you like me or not, I, I, I've got some experience, and I know what I'm doing. And I've never been disciplined, not once, ever. And I've always received incredible, uh, employee evaluation marks. In fact, since I've been here, I've gotten nothing but perfect marks. Um, and with that being said, I, you know, and, uh, we've got some staff from long ago. I guess Dave's probably one of the few that was here when I got here. I want you to rewind a little bit to, you know, previous Madeira Beach. Let's go back five or six years and think of Archibald Park and how that was structured. And we had an ad hoc committee, and we couldn't come to a conclusion on that. And I don't want to say Crawford came in and saved the day, which I didn't, but I got involved. We got it straightened out, and you see the beautiful park that we've got today. Um, the nine-eleven committee, Mr. Kocheck's in the audience. You know, Pat Chaunce was a, a committee chair on that. You know, you, you remember, the city donated the land, but didn't want to participate in building the structure. They were going to get a bunch of volunteers to do it. The recession kind of changed how much people wanted to volunteer, and the city had to kind of come in and help out. And between, you know, nine-eleven committee and the City of Madeira Beach, you see one of the best nine-eleven monuments, you, you know, out there today. Um, like it or not, this, the, the city center is what it is, but the old buildings certainly caused struggles for staff and, and, and what we, what we did, the fire station was literally falling apart, car, conference rooms flooding, you know, those types of things. And, and, and we, we figured that out. And if you like this building or not, and if you think it's too big, or the Taj Mahal that Crawford built, we figured, you know, we, we continuously figured those problems out. Uh, you know, I gave, uh, Amy a pat on the back. Our city records were completely in chaos, you know, and I, I, I can't take credit for it, but I certainly participated in whatever, uh, um, that needed to be done to get that, that there. And, and Amy deserves ninety-nine percent of the credit, but I am the city manager. That was done under, you know, my, my clock. Um, the, the other thing I want to, you know, how about your budget? You know, you look at your budget book. I, I'll take all the credit in the world for hiring Vince, but I mean, remember the days of counting tires, Dave, and wondering how many tires you had to put in your budget? I mean, we've become more sophisticated. And, uh, again, I don't want to take the credit for that, but that's under the, on, on, under my watch. Even, you know, Marcy just showed on the screen the shortcuts that we took just in road projects. Here, let's just put another top on it and make it look okay, and the curbs go away, and we don't care about the drainage and, and those types of things. We changed the way that we did things from taking shortcuts to doing it and doing it right. And that's what I thought I was doing when I did this. So, I feel the good that I've done certainly outweighs the bad. And if the bad that I've done... And if the bad that I've done is finding happiness within City Hall, then I'll, I'll take that arrow. I, I really will. I take a lot of unnecessary arrows, but that's one I'll take. And I'm sure the, you know, the people that aren't Crawford supporters are going to say, oh, happiness, you know, how, how cute is that? You know, he's got his little girlfriend in City Hall. Well, I, I use this analogy. You ever have somebody come up to you and say, I had to put my dog down? You feel bad for them, but that person really feels a hole inside, right? You feel bad, but they feel really bad. Well, happiness is kind of like that. You know, if I say, you know, Travis, I'm not happy today, you feel bad for me, but you don't feel the same way I do. I finally found it, and I'm not going to say I'm sorry for that, and that's why I came to you guys with the dilemma that I had. So not only did I want to pursue it, but I wanted to be as transparent as possible. And this is where I think people miss, frankly, what was done. So I contacted, whoosh, you got a, you got a pass on this one, you lucky guy, you weren't, you weren't around during this, but before I came to you, the first thing I wanted to do is find out if it was legal, legal by the state of Florida. It's a legal relationship, right? In fact, our personnel attorney says, you can date her, but you can't marry her. And I said, perfect, right there and there, that was, that was, that was, that was the ruling I was looking for, right? So then I talked to our city attorneys. He said the same thing, and we've, we've rehashed this at a meeting, I think in June before, so we don't have to get into that. But then I did check the ICMA Code of Ethics, and if you want to read it, and there's copies of it out in the audience, Tenant Number 12 says, "The public office is a public trust. A member shall not leverage his or her position for personal gain or benefit." And again, you know, the, the employee in question is Ms. McGrady, and she's a wonderful girl, and I would never say anything to diminish her accomplishments as, as an employee, but if I was going to line my pockets for personal gain, I think I would have looked at a different position, right? So I, I don't think that I should be, that that's obviously, although I'm going to, you know, take Cheryl's salary and run is kind of, you know, what, what I'm getting at. But they, they give a guideline, and it says, "The member should," and the, the word is "should," "disclose any personal relationship to the governing body in any instance where there could be an appearance of conflict of interest." It says "should," not "shall." So the attorney that I talked to says, you don't even have to go ask them. I wanted to not disclose it. I wanted to ask permission, if you guys remember. So instead of starting the relationship, before that relationship started, I went to each and one of every single commissioner, and I said, I don't want to do this unless it's unanimous, I won't proceed. I proceeded, so obviously you know what I got from every single commissioner, including Commissioner Elaine Poe. Everyone said, it's okay. At that point in time, I said, you know, we can transfer her. At that time, Ms. McGrady had two job offers from other organizations outside of the, outside of Madera Beach. And everybody kind of said, hey, everything's working great, we're rolling, things are clicking, let's keep the band together. I said, you know, we can transfer her to another department. I think my, 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 I don't know, I'm looking, getting tongue-tied, but my performance is the word I'm looking for, kind of dictated that I could handle being the city manager and having my girlfriend be my assistant. That's what this is. And, and, and I think you guys realize that as well. So I, I was unanimously approved at that time, and again, we had options at that time to do something else, but we chose not to. What I don't understand is, that was, let's say, July or August of 2015, and the complaint was filed in March or April of 2016. So what happened during those months? Was there, you know, something, something must have happened to trigger that. And I'll tell you what happened. Two developments were, you know, put in front of the city of Madera Beach. I was actively lobbied by Commissioner Poe to recommend against them, and again, from the professional seat that I sit in, those developments are the best thing for the city of Madera Beach. As my personal opinion, that may or may not agree with my professional opinion, but as your city manager, those developments are good for Madera Beach. You guys need tax base, you need jobs, you need reasons for people that live in Madera Beach not to have to leave to go to work. There's a lot of pros. There are some cons. I'll admit there's cons to it. Traffic, yeah, you're going to have some extra traffic in town. There's going to be cons to this. There always are cons. But the pros outweigh the cons, and so when this board asked me for a professional recommendation, I made it. I had a commissioner that tried to lobby me to change my vote. She's also lobbying me to fire employees for no reason at all. She's also done a, a number of things, and I refused. Then the ethics complaint came through. So, you know, I, I keep going back to this, too, you know. Do you guys remember when we forgave the water lien? Whoosh, you don't, maybe you do. You were probably paying attention. Nancy, this might even been before you. We, Mr. Holton comes to us and says, hey, I've got this huge water lien on Lev Rock's property. Is there any way we can work together? And what did we say? We forgave the water lien if what? He engaged a contractor, and he was going to develop the property within X amount of years, right? You guys wanted these properties developed. A Starbucks and a, a donut shop isn't going to cash flow the Lev Rock's property. We all knew these were going to be major developments. I can't tell you the number of times I was asked about Barry Loff's properties by commissioners. When's it going to come up for sale? In fact, Travis Hope, Mayor, helped me out with the, his name's Dick, the caretaker of the property. Dave, you know what? I made him mad, because I leaked the fact that it was probably going to get sold, and the tenants started leaving. Yes, Samson, so, I mean, all along, these developments weren't like some shocker, like, you know, Mr. Carnes and Mr. Holton came in here and plopped it on the desk, and you're like, holy cow, wonderful. We've been talking about this for years, years. In fact, if you go back in my recruitment file, it says, get the Lev Rock's property developed. So I mean, we've been talking about this since, since I've been hired. So back to the, the, the charge, which, again, ICMA confirmed was filed by Commissioner Poe. The ICMA Executive Board, when I approached them, wanted me to come in sorrowful. I'm sorry I screwed up. And I maintained that I didn't. I maintained that I, I met their tenant. I maintained that I didn't do anything wrong. But there's, and that part that I just read for you, note that it doesn't say any references to checking previous case law that they've done, or, you know, the members must call ICMA to get an official ruling. It just says, members should disclose any personal relationship to the governing body, which I did. Not only did I disclose it, I got permission. I didn't even have to ask for your permission, I just had to tell you I'm doing it. So when I got there, it, it, we, there was a little bit of background provided by them. It was confirmed that Commissioner Poe filed it, and then they, they stated some, some facts that weren't true. One of them was, well, the, these developments are so exaggerated in the press because of your relationship. I thought that that was probably an untrue statement. I thought that that was relatively low blow. But then I was also told by the outgoing president, I think his name is Jim Bennett, that he didn't care what the state of Florida had to say, or what the commission in Madera Beach had to say, that I was in his arena now, and he's the outgoing president. The reason why I attached an article in, in this packet, it's an article from Biddeford, Maine, is that's where he's the city manager. And he just had an employee evaluation that was far from being perfect, which I've scored since I've got to Madera Beach. And he's using state statute of Maine to hide the fact that he doesn't have to disclose what those evaluations said. So he cares what his state statute has to say, and he's using it to benefit himself. But when the state of Florida says that an inter-office relationship is legal, that, that didn't bear any weight, you know, with the ICMA. Also, they kept hitting on these pay raises that I gave Ms. McGrady to, again, line my own pockets. First of all, there were two of them. One was just the annual COLA, and as a matter of practice here with, between Finance Department and I, every budget, I have to sign a payroll sheet that says, the board approved this, and now all the employees get that. So that's one of them, but you approved that. And then if you remember, you gave her $4 extra when we separated employment with the previous zoning director to help with the contracted consultants that we had to help keep the zoning department running. And I may have been amiss when I recommended that. And the reason why I say that is, if I went back in time, and I'm thinking, jeez, I shouldn't have recommended that, I should have just gave you some options. But we, there was only one option. I mean, she, she had an incredible amount of experience in that, in that field. She worked with Dave Healy and Al Carrier and Marcy and all those people for years. She's got an incredible history there, and there was no other option. What I should have said was, and poor Cheryl, she, you gave her $4 an hour. I make $150,000 a year. I'm not lining my pockets with four bucks an hour, and that's the, you know, that what they're trying to say at ICMA, that I, I took this $4 and, you know, I, I don't have a new Harley or anything like that in the garage to speak of it, so I'm a little upset with myself, but. The other point that I want to make is, love me or hate me, by now you know I'm not the dumbest guy in the room. If I knew I was violating an ICMA tenant at renewal time last year, I would have just quit. I didn't have to renew it. I didn't have to be part of their organization. But I read their tenant, and anybody that reads that, I mean, you, you don't have to be an attorney to read, members should disclose any personal relationship to the governing body. Boom, done. I mean, that's it. So what they're maintaining is, they've had previous case law that they ruled that an inter-office relationship can cause some stress on the, on the office. And I would imagine in some certain, certain circumstances, it could. But we're a small organization, there's 11 of us behind that door, we all get along fine. I think if you asked anybody, I certainly, Cheryl certainly doesn't abuse her ability or, or, you know, her, her reputation, or whatever you want to say, of being the city manager's girlfriend and gaining any clout over it. In fact, she probably gets, it's the opposite. So I, I just don't see where any of this really is relevant. I, I don't, again, I respect the ICMA, but I think their decision, their, the decision was excessive and incredibly draconian. I mean, I, I think I can say this. I received the same penalty as a city manager who set up a webcam next door at his neighbor's house in his daughter's bedroom. I received the same penalty of a city manager who embezzled $60,000 on a city credit card. And I, now, I'm getting the, the same penalty because I, I don't want to sound cheesy, but I found happiness within the workplace, and I pursued it, and I pursued it about as transparently as anybody possibly could. So with that, I'm, I'm ready to take any arrows I need to take from people that don't agree with me. Again, this is not the city commission's fault. I came to you guys, I asked. We did have some options back then, those options aren't there now. You know, one thing that I keep hearing in the public is, oh, the relationship's going to go south, and she's going to file some, you know, horrible case against the city. You know, we all know Cheryl, she'll be happy to sign whatever release or waiver you want her to sign, and she, that's just not in the cards. She's my fiancee, we're engaged now, this isn't just some typical office affair, this is the real deal. There's a real relationship there, and, you know, it is what it is at this point. So I'm dealing with the ICMA legally on my own, not on the, not at the city's expense. I don't know how far I want to push the issue, to be frank with you, Mayor. Again, I don't know if I care if the ICMA has any opinion on whether or not I'm happily dating somebody within the office, as long as the state of Florida says it's okay and the city of Madera Beach says it's okay. So with that, I will end my rant, and the floor is back to you, Mr. Rant.
Sorry, Mr. City Manager. Do you remember about five years ago, it was January, you came down, I invited you on my boat, got a six-pack of beer. I believe it was 22 degrees in Wisconsin, and I think we were having a nice 80-degree, flat, calm weather day here.
Yeah, I do remember.
And I took you for a ride around Madera Beach in the boat, trying to sell you on becoming the city manager here.
Yep.
You said one thing to me. If we're going to do it, we're going to do it right. You've done it right.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, I do. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the applause, because I, I really do, I swear on my mother's grave, and I shouldn't even do that, I, if I knew it was going to come to this, we would have made other arrangements, you know. Again, not to belittle what Cheryl does or, or her income or anything like that, but, you know, we could have easily, she could have found other employment, we could have done other things, but I think at the time, things were clicking so well, and literally, I think the words were, let's keep the band together. And I see the mayor getting a little emotional, I'm getting a little emotional. But I mean, that's the reaction that we got from all five of the commissioners. I mean, everyone was thrilled, you know, and I, I mean, I don't want to pick on Elaine Poe, I really don't, but she was the one that said, she's the one that said, it's about time you kids got together. And that's the, that was the truth. I mean, I mean, it was just, we, we never bring it to the office, you can ask any employee that. It, it's just unfortunate that it had to come to this level. And again, I, I feel like I was unfairly censured, I feel like I was a bit of sabotage because I didn't do what she had asked me to do, but I don't have any, you see in the letter, I put it in print, if she would answer a phone call, I'd love to talk to her. I, I've got no bad blood against her, I, I hope we can be friends again, I, you know, hope she runs for commission again, whatever it may be, but we have to put this behind us and move on, because I can tell you, I'm doing a lot of work nowadays that isn't the same type of work that I was doing back in the day, and we were pretty effective when we were really rolling. So it's time to just kind of put the dirty politics aside and start putting what's important in front of us.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford, and once again, you know, you've got 100% my support.
I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor.
Do you have the commissioners have anything? City Manager?
Yes, I, excuse me, Terry.
No, I've got some.
If I remember right, Mr. Crawford, when we gave Cheryl that $4 an hour raise because she was helping out in another department to train someone, at the end of that time, when the training was over, we took the $4 back.
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. So, you know, it's not like we were padding her pockets, or your pockets, or anyone else. And again, like you said, the ICMA was an elective organization. It's not required in your contract with the city of Madera Beach to be the city manager. So as far as I'm concerned, you know, you followed all the rules, you did the Florida statute, you checked with the commission, you checked with the attorneys, you did everything you were supposed to do. And, Mr. Crawford, you're not going anywhere.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. I like Mr. Crawford, I think he's wonderful. And I wanted to be a bit objective. I said, all right, to myself, I said, all right, let's just, you know, do some homework, do some research. I contacted ICMA, and I've spoken to some county commissioners, I've spoken to some elected officials, I've spoken to some other city managers, just to see what they thought of Mr. Crawford. And I received positive response in many cases, I mean, in all cases, I should say. So he's very, very well-liked. I said, all right, that's really good, he's done wonderful for the city, he's got a good reputation. Let's look at what he has done in probably from three different directions. Let's look at the legal aspect, let's look at the moral, and let's look at the ethical aspect of this. And in every which way I looked, everything really came down to legal, because, you know, the laws are written for, for reason. And in the state of Florida, the law basically says that, you know, you can't be married and be involved in a city or being in the same department. And, and our city, we don't have any laws on the book that prohibits that. So, we sort of default back to what the state law states. And the state law merely says, you know, unless you're married, um you don't have to worry about this. Um and I'm sure that when it comes to the time that Mr. Crawford and Cheryl decide to marry, I'm I'm sure at that time, they would make a different decision. So, um I I see all the good things that he has done. And if in some people's minds, some of the things that he may not be squeaky clean, um you know, it really should default back to the direction that he was given and the laws that are on the books. I have thought about this for a long, long time. I really have lost sleep, believe it or not. I've been very, very worried about tonight. Um you know, because we all care about Madera Beach. Commissioner Lester stated it. He says, oosh, I know you love Madera Beach, that's why I want to appoint you and Mr. Mayor and Nancy and so forth. And yes, I love Madera Beach. We all love Madera Beach. That's why we're here. And keeping our city manager, I think it'd be a very positive thing, in some minds that may be, you know, a question. I reach out to your hearts and say, please forgive him for anything that you may think is wrong, but what he does, what all the good things that he does with the city is absolutely positive. And we're looking into the future in in a positive way. So, um I just want to basically extend my support as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to save my comments to the end. I I like to get all the facts before before I make a decision, but save that, you know, I've been a hundred percent in Crawford's corner from the beginning. And I've had lengthy conversations about this and it it that being said, I do like to get all the facts before, but where I learned that was was from was from Crawford. And and Crawford would not have made this decision without coming to each and every one of this commission and getting their support. And that, I just can't understand that that Commissioner Poe has has said that she didn't know about it. That that's that's not consistent with Mr. Crawford's past, that's not consistent with Mr. Crawford's future, that he that he's that the way he does things and the way he does things consistently. I I I just, there's there's something wrong here. And I'm gonna listen tonight and see if there's anything that I haven't heard or or said, but and and right now, a hundred and fifteen percent behind Mr. Crawford.
And Commissioner Lester, you brought you brought up a good point, because Mr. Crawford wanted a full consensus. He or he was not moving forward. So, I I gotta ask myself, and I think I'm in the same boat with you, and I'm and I'm glad you brought that up and I'm glad you said that, Commissioner Lester. So, thank you very much.
And Mr. Mayor, I I don't mean to take the floor from you, but it it was confirmed. In fact, there's witnesses to the fact, and I believe it's even in the press, that Elaine Poe said that she, I don't know why Shane is accusing me of this, it was filed anonymously. It was filed anonymously, but the ICMA confirmed it at the executive hearing. And the material that they received was requested by the finance director by Commissioner Poe. So, you don't have to be a private investigator to figure out how how this happened. So, first she went on record of saying it was anonymous, I had nothing to do with it, and then it was confirmed. So, what I what I was concerned with was, was she speaking on behalf of herself or was she be speaking on behalf of the entire board? Because she didn't say that in the complaint. So, the entire board gave me a policy direction to do one thing. She changed her mind, didn't talk to me about it, didn't come to us about it, didn't workshop the idea, nothing. Just said, I'm gonna file a complaint to frankly defame this guy's reputation. That's clearly what this is. It's sabotage. It's political retaliation. Happens all the time. I'm the receiver of it. I understand it. I understand why it happened, but let's not beat around the bush. We all know what what happened. She she I there's witnesses to the fact that I asked her and she confirmed that it was okay.
Well, Commissioner Poe's supposed to be back at the November meeting. Maybe she'll go ahead and give us an explanation at that time. Um is there any further, Mr. Crawford? I know it's a very painful thing to go through and that's your personal life.
Well, you know, Mr. Mayor.
That's your personal life. No shame.
It is. I I do, I do appreciate you recognizing that.
And 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 before you step on me, I'm gonna step a little on you. And uh, you know, uh number one that kind of got me was, hopefully this was not done by a commissioner on behalf of the city without coming to the board and without coming into the sunshine and talking to us about it before doing that complaint. Number two, uh you know, the ICMA not recognizing the state laws of Florida and being a native Floridian, I kind of find that as a hell of an insult. And uh but like I said, Mr. Crawford, I'm a hundred percent behind you. And uh hopefully, Ms. Commissioner Poe will be here in November and go ahead and explain, you know, or why she did this and hopefully it was not on the behalf of the city commission.
Thank you.
At this time, I believe there were some comment cards and since this is uh on the agenda, so Madam State Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, since we did have a lot of late attendees, I see a lot of people standing in the room. So, if anybody wants to speak to this issue, you have to fill out a green comment card and give it to the city clerk. Um and if you want to speak under public comment on an item that's not on the agenda, you still need to fill out a green comment card and give it to the city clerk.
Ginger Tolliver?
Hi. You're taking the thunder out of my presentation because she's chicken and not here, but um I'm here tonight to show my overwhelming support for Cheryl and Shane. You notice I said Cheryl, too. Therefore, my statements will be directed toward the person filing the ethics complaint. Elaine, when you first arrived on the scene, I was one hundred percent behind you. On our first meeting, I thought, what a feisty little, can I say the word? Shitshaker. Uh that comes from my college days. Uh she'll certainly shake up the establishment. I have summarily learned that this would be at the expense of anyone crossing you for any reason. You are a complete narcissist who always needs to be the center of attention. You have lied to me on numerous occasions, the most glaring was in my home when you commented about Cheryl and Shane. Aren't they the cutest little thing? The cutest little pair? You know, weren't we lucky to get two for the price of one? In my entryway. A lie. Now she denies it. Uh she saved all her nu- if I wish I'd saved all my numerous emails from her condemning all of you and Shane, but I didn't. Uh she's the one that's bringing negative press to the city, not Shane. She uh she is the one who should have an ethics complaint filed against her. Her position changes with the wind. Perhaps the sh- blank blank is from hi- her shaker has come back to soil her and her reputation. She's the negative atten- she's the one that has brought the negative attention to our city. Shane, you've done everything right. Sometimes I wish you would have listened to me when I said months ago, if I were you, I'd go someplace that appreciated me. But you know what? That wouldn't be you. You'd be running out on your job and you couldn't do that. I've lived here for over twenty-five-plus years and I've lived here and never come to a meeting until all this stuff happened. I certainly hope that the commissioners will show their strong support for Cheryl and Shane and censure. I hope you heard that word, Elaine Poe. I will do everything in my power to see that she no longer sits in that seat that she was chicken to show up for tonight. Thank you.
And ma'am, in the future, I guess you could use the initials S.S. Then that way, it won't be considered locker room talk. It's okay. Madam State Clerk.
Missy Hahn?
Well, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I am the current president of the Treasury on the Madera Beach Chamber of Commerce and been in that post for about a year now. Shane or Mr. Crawford was actually one of the people that interviewed me. And for the past year, I have found him to be nothing but professional and honest. And when there's some tough things to say, he says it and he says it directly. I appreciate working with him. I believe all of our chamber members. I haven't heard any negative comments about his work here. And I just want to say congratulations on your engagement. Thank you.
Jeff Brown? Jack Bozak?
Jack Bozak. I'm an architect and uh involved quite a bit uh in what's going on at all the beaches up and down this uh this coast. I think the key words you've got to kind of consider in this whole outbreak that's happened are motive, motivation, uh perception and reality. I started working on these beaches in nineteen sixty-eight, uh bought my first property on these beaches and I talked collectively about all these beaches and I have a pretty good knowledge of most of them. Uh nineteen sixty-nine, I was not long out of college. I purchased my uh first property for uh construction on the uh on one of the beaches out here. So, I think I pretty much know uh a lot about all the political uh intonations and the things that happen uh up and down this coast. Uh I've seen the good, I've seen the bad, I've seen the ugly and I've seen things you just don't even want to know about, uh including a piece of property I that very few people know. I had a contract on the land at the where the penou- where the uh Park Street Bridge came through. And someday, if you want to hear a story about corruption and problems, that that was one in nineteen seventy, seventy-one that that I was uh exposed to. The uh cities either move ahead or or they stagnate. And I think the one thing that Shane has always done is take everything, everybody's opinion into consideration. He's done a hell of a job of trying to uh round out his opinion with with a lot of input. I think he's been uh always acted honorably and I think that he's always acted in the best interest of Madera Beach. The um the perception that we're all trying to have sold right now on us is one that basically comes from detractors that are opposed to some of the uh ongoings in Madera Beach. And I think that you need to consider that in your overall uh consideration of what's before you tonight. The the motives, uh the motive that I believe Shane works under is is honor and and uh consideration of all the facts and all the people involved and all the factors. The motivation is the best interest of uh Madera Beach. I think he always acts in consideration of the best interest of the beach and its and its residents and I would encourage you to uh support him in this uh attack.
Bob Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Shane and somewhere out there in the TV land, Cheryl and Pat, I'm sure they're watching. If anybody, based on my past actions, wants to accuse me of being the chairman of the Shane Crawford Fan Club, I can only say they're right. I just, I'm upset, I can't tell you how upset I am, at the indelible blemish that Elaine Poe has placed on what is a wonderful resume that Shane has taken years to build and I hope she understands it. All of our lives are affected at one time or another by chance encounters that result in or having to make life-altering decisions. Unfortunately, what people decide to do when confronted by situations like this may result in complications or have repercussions for others, which should be understood, especially by those who will be directly affected by decisions made under these circumstances, is the fact that while decisions are conscious actions, they are most often generated by emotions that are beyond the control and and are in the subconscious. To be more specific, my reference here tonight is to the relationship that developed between city manager Shane Crawford and his executive assistant Cheryl McGrady and the actions taken by Commissioner Elaine Poe in response. In their infinite wisdom, both the state of Florida and the city of Madera Beach have taken care to avoid getting involved in private relationships, either in or out of the workplace, unless or until a conflict of interest or a problem occurs that requires them by law to step in. After consoling with the city attorney, both the board and Shane and Cheryl were advised there was no legal reason they could not continue in their jobs. Anxious to pursue would have been extremely successful careers in Madera Beach, but at the same time, realizing their responsibility to each other, to the board and to the other employees and to the residents of the city must be reviewed in order to determine whether they could pursue their duties without conflict. The first thing they did was to discuss the issue between themselves and agree that they saw no problem and that unless one occurred, they could continue to work together. Next, they sought and received the approval of the entire board, including allegedly Poe, who now denies that she approved it. They then talked to the employees at City Hall and the response was affirmative. Unfortunately, this was apparently not good enough for Poe. When advised, Shane and Cheryl were engaged. She became a one-woman morality committee, anointing herself as chairwoman and subsequently filed an ethics complaint against city manager Shane Crawford with the International City County Management Association, uh of which she spoke. Knowing both Cheryl and Shane as I do, I'm personally convinced that from the moment they found themselves committed to one another, they did everything possible and necessary to assure their feelings for one another would never interfere in any way with their responsibilities or with those they worked with and can continue to exercise the responsibilities to the citizens and to the city without compromising performance or the trust of all involved. Guys, I think you did a wonderful job and Shane, I hope this doesn't sour you in any way in the city of Madera Beach. Thank you.
I've been told that Jeff Brown has returned?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff, people in the audience. There's a certain kind of anger growing in our society and it's deplorable. And we see it every time we turn on the television. If you can't find your way politically, you just cut the other people's legs out from underneath them. You just go right for the jugular. You just eviscerate them, you tear them apart. That's the new norm. And it seems that one of us has taken it upon themselves to find themselves in that new norm. When you can't win in public opinion, you go after someone privately. It's deplorable. It's sad. It should never have happened. And I hope the few followers that might still be behind her will see the error of her ways of getting into people's private lives. Think about it. Put yourself in that position. I doubt she did or she wouldn't have filed that complaint. This is retribution at its worst. And no one has asked for it tonight, but I sure as hell will. I want her resignation. That's what I want. Because the discord that's being created in this city by a very small percentage is not fair to everyone else here. It's not right and it should be stopped. Thank you.
Rick Cowley? No. Steve Koechek?
Uh to be in support of Shane seems to be what the uh uh public is is asking for. What I'm asking for is that the a the commission write to the ICMA and uh it state their views that in no way was she representing the views of the board. I think that's gonna be an important part of helping to Shane regain his credibility uh with that board. That it was a rogue action by a commissioner and in no way does this board support any of the things that were said by it. Uh we all have our personal lives and uh it has no business inside this room. What people do in their personal lives, that's it. If you're not breaking the law, I don't really want to hear about it. Whether it's your morality or you think it's right or you think it's wrong, talk about it outside. We have a lot of things going on here now. And what what gets me is is people seem surprised by some of the actions being taken. Let's remember, this has been since two thousand we've been going on. This is part of our master plan and we've been dealing with it every day, every year since the year two thousand. There's a certain group of people in the city that, for whatever reason, they're opposing to it. But it's not new. It's coming along. For years, that piece of property has been there. And all along during the time, we have done the things necessary to be able to make that property develop. What I would suggest, if somebody really has a big issue with that problem, with that property and the development, is buy it. And then you can do what you want with it. Or buy the air rights over it so they can only build the one-story building. What I'm urging the commission to do is keep Shane on. He's done a wonderful job. And for yourselves, keep the projects moving. Right now, people are taking our tax dollars and we're gonna waste it in litigations in court. Is that really what the residents of Madera Beach want? I was not happy with the condos in there. That was never supposed to be part of the area plan. That was put in later on into the area plans so the condos can be built. The area plan was for development of hotels only because we had no hotels. We had a couple of mom and pops. Once they took down and put up the Serena, that was the last quality place for a hotel. So, right now, if if you have to change anything, do something with the condos, make them smaller or make them go away. But the hotels are important. We're a beach community. We're a tourist community. That's the last piece. Once that's over, it's over. And what we're doing is not for today, it's for the next ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. If you're living in today, you're already gone. We're past you, we're by you. You're in our rear windshield. You're in our rearview mirror, we're looking at you, standing there saying, how did this happen? It's been coming since. It's been coming since 2000, so it's not new. The names have changed, but the direction has always been the same. Move forward. Good job, Shane.
I was shocked to even hear that this was being considered on the best city manager in the state of Florida. This man is fantastic. Here he is. And by this woman who has not appeared since the last time I was here. She is moving the pot. She's getting back a pound of flesh. She wants to know who she can get it from, because she lost it the last time I was here. She wanted, she picked him, and makes him suffer for nothing. We all know who she is, don't we? We know she's up behind it, it's quite obvious. I just want to say, I think he's a man of honor, integrity, hardworking, industrious, and one of the finest people you'll ever meet. I think Madeira Beach needs him more than he needs Madeira Beach. Thank you.
Lynn Piotti, 513 129th Avenue East. I supported the District III Commissioner to be the Commissioner, and at the time, I truly believed she would be the best for her district and for the city as a whole. But things changed, and she is trying to stop the city from moving into the 21st century. Her behavior changed when plans for two major building projects were proposed, which would enhance the city's position and make Madeira Beach a first-class city. I was a Commissioner back in, way back, and that was always our goal. We tried to do all that we can to move this city forward, overcome the hurdles of people's problems and dissension between the business people and the residents was always an issue, but we dealt with it. But we dealt with it honestly, and we were forthcoming in the solutions that we presented for the people. So getting back to the reason why we're here tonight, I think, and trying to find the root cause, is the behavior of a person when these major building projects were proposed changed her attitude, outlook, and disposition. She voted no for the two projects, that was her right to do, but that was not good enough for her. For whatever reason, she started to campaign to besperch, to besperch not only those development projects, but the city manager and other commissioners, and unfortunately, city employees. She did this on an unprofessional manner and did not adhere to the rules and regulations of the city charter and any other rules and guidelines she took an oath to uphold, to uphold, I should say. I am sorry to say that District III Commissioner Elaine Poe is not the person I supported and hope to carry on as a good Commissioner. She is honestly a disappointment, not only to me, but to the city of Madeira Beach. Her campaign against the city and other commissioners included the following: the issuance of ethics complaint against our city manager Shane Crawford, as you know, and we spoke about all evening. He was brought before a professional organization, not before an ethics committee or in violation of laws or regulations. She was also responsible for bringing ethics charges against the other board members for violating the sunshine law. The charges were brought for violating procedures for Commissioner Ballad voting to replace Pat Chance. In closing, I'd just like to say, she stated to members of the planning commission, "I don't play well with others, and I don't play by the rules." The Madeira Beach Board of Commissioners does not have room for a vogue Commissioner who is not a team player and does not play by the rules. I honestly and sincerely suggest, Elaine, if you're out there, please consider resigning.
I was one of the two Commissioners that she made that comment in front of, by the way, so I can verify that as fact. My name is Jim Everett, I live at 15458 First Street East, and I've entitled this Shane Crawford, Boxers or Briefs? Who cares? Here's what I do care about: Dunn, New City Hall, Rock Park, Archibald Park Improvement, Snack Shack Revitalization, Marina Upgrades and Improvements, Beautification of Gulf Boulevard, brand-new Marriott, brand-new Publix, new developments on the beach, brand-new Eco Village. Here's what else I care about: in the works, bearing of utilities on Gulf Boulevard, the paving project that we spoke of, using state-of-the-art, cutting-edge technology, by the way. Sliced pizza, new water taxi service, beach concessions at Archibald Park, Holiday Isles Marina Development, Madeira Town Center. That's what I care about. I'm a resident of Madeira Beach, and as other people have stated, and I'm sure others will state, if you don't move forward, you stagnate and you die. All you have to do is look around at other beach communities. You've got a town just to the south of us that's struggling to pay for the maintenance on their bridge. So what they're going to do, they're going to put a toll on it, which all the residents are going to have to pay for. So let me tell you what, folks, if it works one way or the other, you either take an increased property millage rate to pay for things, or you allow some new developments to come in and generate some tax dollars to pay for things. Your choice. Thank you.
I'm Sam Lewis, 429 Bokse Yager Drive, and I tore up my 10-minute speech. Everybody has been so eloquent tonight, talking about you guys, Mayor, Commissioners, the staff, Shane. I was part of that 2000 development program. I developed one of the first projects under that program. You guys have been the absolute best I've ever worked with. You love the city, you work for this city, you've done everything that any resident of this city should love, and to have Shane go through this is just awful. I mean, Shane, I support you, everybody I know supports you, we love you guys. Thank you.
Commissioners, Shane, I'll, like Sam, I'll let go of the 10-minute speech, because it's pretty clear, but what's kind of fun is for decades, being out here selling on the beaches, we've got 14th Century 21s, getting every beach town up and down the block, and it was not that long ago where it was kind of embarrassing, for lack of a better word, bringing people new to this town, driving through the bridges, looking at the, you know, the coin, the name Redneck Riviera for years isn't a really great name, but we've heard it a long time. And what's happened now is this town, there's nothing like it, and it's because of your leadership as a Commissioner, Mr. Mayor and Shane, and what your vision has brought to this town, has made it so there's nothing, there's nothing like this town, from an investment standpoint, from a lifestyle standpoint, from what you have done so far, and everything that's coming forward. You know, there is things we've never seen here before. We've got people building million-dollar-plus spec homes, right, in this town. We have hundreds of millions of dollars worth of projects being built and developed, and that doesn't happen without one key ingredient, and that's called consumer confidence, right? And it's consumer confidence in your leadership, and Shane's vision, his guidance, and your great judgment with the planning and zoning board, and everybody, the leadership here in this town. And I think it's phenomenal what you guys have done, and I think it's embarrassing that there's been the pushes from Commissioner Poe attacks towards Shane. You know, I'm thankful that Shane didn't just say, "Screw it, I'm out of here, goodbye", right? He could easily do that, and he rightfully could, and I could say rightfully sometimes should have. But he loves this city, and he loves the vision, and he's going to push through, and I can tell you just from being out here, there's nothing like this. So I personally hope that Shane stick around. We love you, man. You're doing phenomenal things in this town, and so is the commission. So let's have his back, and let's keep pushing forward, and let's just keep making Madeira Beach the best crown jewel here on the beach. So thanks for everything you do, everybody loves what you're doing, the majority does.
Dave, you can start Reese's time now.
Reese Noren, 363A Medallion Boulevard, Madeira Beach. I'm a new guy here, I've only been here a little over 30 years, almost a third of my life, I guess. Three minutes isn't enough, I wish I was as talented as these few that came up here and said it all real quick. But I'm old-fashioned, and I, I got to say it the old-fashioned way, I think a man should be judged on his accomplishments, not on his religion, or his, the color of his eyes, or his choice of mates. I'm the luckiest man alive. Many years ago, I met a girl, and I invited her to join me in life. I didn't ask her to marry me. To this day, I don't know what she said as an answer. However, we're celebrating our 58th anniversary next week. Shane, all I've got to say is the organization that's throwing you out is the best thing that can happen to you. I'm like the first lady here, I'm not politically correct, that's just a bad bunch of people with, with the idea that they have the right to tell everybody how to live and to judge our community without even knowing us or hearing anything other than what you've been charged with, which to me is totally erroneous and unprofessional on their part. So I, if I were you, I'd, I'd put a piece of mistletoe on the back of my belt and say... As I said, I'm not politically correct. But the meat of the matter is, he's done a great job. I defy anybody to look at any of the projects that he's been involved with and say they are not an improvement, they're not the betterment of everybody that lives here. I have no doubt that the developments that are proposed are in the best interest of the community, because it will bring economic growth, and it will make the place a better place to live overall. Thank you very much for your...
Commander, Commander, Reese, Commander. Commander, Reese, real quick, one quick question. Well, if you could say it loudly, where did you meet your wife? Where did you meet her, though? I know at location, but where?
At a party.
At work. You all worked together, right?
No, actually...
Okay, I thought y'all worked together. Okay. Now, that was my question, I thought when I had the conversation with your wife.
I lost a bet when I met her. My best man bet that he could get this group of women together for a party, and I was running 70 miles down the road every weekend to be with the friends that I knew, so I bet him a case of beer, he couldn't, and I lost.
Congratulations, sir.
Well, good evening to our Commissioner, Mayor, and all of the people that worked so hard to make our community the awesomest place you could live, because in reality, I could live anywhere. And my name is Shirley Nelly, and I run marinas around here and sail yachts, and I like it here because I've got water on all four sides of me. And one of the things that, when I first met Shane over there, he just moved here, I don't think he lived here a week, and he put his boat on his lift, he bought a boat, and it, and it fell in the water, because the lift broke, because, probably because nobody fixed anything over where he bought the house, and he just assumed that it was going to fit on there real good. So what I'm, what I'm jabbing at right now, and I'm getting direct, is that these marinas that are around here and all this water around us is going to bring so much revenue to this community, and because of him and his foresight, and him, because he loves water, the mayor, Travis, they have tried to build several different, the Madeira Bay Town Center, and we're working at the Holiday Isle, and when Sam Lewis built the Madeira Bay Marina, that's a really good idea. And it's too bad that Elaine couldn't figure out that this is really an awesome idea and would go so low as to pick on somebody's personal life to obscure whatever her, her issues are. So all I got to say is, thank you, Shane, and the mayor, and all my Commissioners, and my whole city, because I really like living here.
My name's Pete Trot, I live at 378 145th. I'm here to support Shane. I've heard all the accomplishments, but I think what is missing is Amy. He's brought Amy and Vince, and they are a big part of keeping this community together. This idea of Shane doing something bad, if he did something bad, the board did everything as bad as he did. They approved it, they didn't buck it, they didn't complain about it. Whether it's right or wrong, that isn't any part of the question. It definitely isn't the way normal ethical offices are run. However, this is a small community. A small community is much more difficult to operate, to run, than a very large. When you have 50 employees, it's not the same as if you've got 5,000 employees. And so this is a very personal type of operation, and I've, I think whether Cheryl was a benefit, I think the fact that they were able to work together, it was probably a positive thing. And I'm not so sure that he would have been as effective if Cheryl wasn't there helping him along. So the bottom line is, if you think he's bad, the board is just as bad. Now, this is not Elaine Poe forum or whatever. I can't believe all the time that we've spent talking about a Commissioner. That is wrong. Anyway, I support Shane, I think the community has been benefited by not only his expertise, his background, his experience, and in fact, the mentoring that he received when he started out in politics. And this is politics. Thank you, Shane. I think that you've done a good job. I think Cheryl has not been a deterrent, I think she has accelerated your ability to do what you needed to get done. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lisa Ammons. I own Lisa's Cafe in Madeira Beach, Florida. Thank you so much. I gotta tell you, I had a whole list of things to say, and everybody's already said it. I just want to say, I appreciate living in the most beautiful city in the world, and Shane has done an amazing job here. I just can't imagine having a different city manager than Shane. I mean, anything I've ever brought to him or to my mayor, immediately, they've taken care of. They care about our community. I'm so bothered by all this happening. It is such a waste of time. We all love Madeira Beach here. Why can't we all be on the same side and not do these lynch mobs that they do? It is very disturbing to me that we have wasted so much time and money and effort on this. We have so much work to do here. We don't need to waste this type of time on something that is just so meaningless. He has done an amazing job. Cheryl does an amazing job here. My mayor does. I'm just very upset about all of this. So I thank you so much for listening to me. Thank you. Thanks, Shane.
Mr. Mayor, Steve Page, 20,001 Gulf Boulevard, Indian Shores Commission. Ladies and gentlemen, I have a, I've probably said this before, a unique perspective because I have the property where the Marriott Courtyard sits today, and tried to develop that property many years ago. And at a time where there was no city manager. There wasn't even, I think, a building official at the same time. And it was pretty much a nightmare, and made the project unable to develop. And then this wonderful mayor, commission, and this city manager, who's a godsend to me, made it possible to have that beautiful hotel. And I always will be appreciative of that. And I just have to say, for someone to do this to a young couple who's in love at one of the most wonderful times of their lives, tells you something about that person. And that really bothers me. And I think that's, any action that needs to be taken, needs to be taken against that person. And I support Shane and Cheryl a hundred percent and always will. Thank you.
Mayor, city commissioners, Shane. Been a long night. Wow. Everything so far, I couldn't add anything that's been said about Shane and what's going on here. Jim Everett brought up a list of things that, some of those I forgot about, some I didn't know about. Shane's done an outstanding job here. I just can't believe we're here over somebody falling in love with a person in office and, what, a four dollar an hour, got put back. This meeting shouldn't even be even going on. I, Shane, I stand behind you all the way. There's been some very good things said about you, and I hope this city thinks hard about this. Like you said, Nancy's not going nowhere. I hope he doesn't. And I just want to say, thanks for all you've done. And you and Cheryl make a, I've said it before, you guys make a nice looking couple. Congratulations on your engagement. And when you get involved in somebody's personal affairs, your life must be miserable to do this to somebody. I thank you very much.
Christopher Michael Reece.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you. Hey, I like saying, why waste everybody's friggin' time? Who don't like Shane? Who don't like him? I mean, seriously, who here don't like him? Get up!
Chris, you guys speak into the microphone.
Get up. You're preaching to the choir. Let me tell you, this guy right here, I own automotive shop in Seminole. And a little lady came to me one day, her name was Elaine Poe, never met her before, and said, "There's a lady that works at Madeira Beach City Hall." I didn't even really know Shane. I met him one time on, with you, Mr. Mayor, at 911 Speech at Madeira Beach. American Legion, correct? Never met him before. And Elaine Poe says, "If you'll fix this lady's car, I'll buy the parts." And the city manager paid for it. I didn't know him from a hole in the wall. Well, guess when I called that number back, who never answered? Well, not him, because I didn't have his phone number. It was Elaine Poe. So this man paid for the car repairs for a little lady who works here. I don't even know her name, but I work on her car. This is a true story. And this little Buick is a 1994 piece of shit. None of us would drive. Let me tell you, on this beach, we're used to Bentleys. Everybody's got a nice car. I drive a 2001 Marquis. That's so I don't get pulled over. So anyways, this little lady's car gets totaled in a flood a couple weeks ago, out here on the beach. And there's nothing I can do with it. Pete Trot back here, he went to the house, he tried to fix it, didn't you, Pete? Pete's got more money than all of us in here. And he offered to help. Sorry, Pete. Well, anyways, I get a call from Shane who says, "Can you help me out? This guy's on Craigslist on his own time on the weekend looking up cars." This little lady is hunched, I don't even know her name, she's hunched over. She brought her car in with electric seat. We tried to move it back so she could get in her car, and we made a window go up, because she had windows that were down. Every time it rained, the car flooded. That's what killed the car. So we bought a car, he did, he came and got me. And I donated all the labor, and this man paid the parts, so this little lady can drive from 140, I don't know. He's met me at her house twice. I do not hang out with Shane. We have no social engagements. I'm a mechanic. And I fix his car so this little lady can get here every day. She sits at that front desk there, I saw her the other day when I came in here, unknowingly to pay for her car for the repairs, and talk to him about it. And he gave her a car today. Anybody know that? This guy gives her a car today. Who else does that? I'm the guy that did the repairs. I did it for free. But I'll tell you, you can see here, and I preach to you guys, he's done a good job. Everybody knows that. It's obvious. I don't need to tell you, I'm preaching to the choir. But he goes above and beyond. He sits over at American Legion. Do you think this guy can go over there and have a drink? Hell, no. He talks Madeira Beach. So what he does with Cheryl on his off time is talk Madeira Beach.
And Mr. Reece, just to clarify, I know that Barb and Donna, that they're both volunteers in the city of Madeira Beach, and I believe it was Donna's car that finally gave in, and Mr. Crawford did go out and purchase her a car. Because the two ladies are actually almost like a tag team. One doesn't have a car, the other has a car and can't drive, and the car goes down. And I see them up here all the time working, they're a wonderful couple, and Shane, wow, man, that's, to do that, hey, that speaks volumes. Really?
You don't like to do that stuff, do you?
No, you're right, Chris, and I will bring that up, because you want us to sit there and talk about, you know, honor, or integrity, or, you know. You got it, man. You got it. I don't think there's any question of your ethics after watching that one. Sorry, Madam Seacler.
That's okay. Captain Mark Hubbard.
So much has been said tonight, and I think we're all in agreement. You know, that story you just mentioned, just talked about, reminds me of Rotary, of Shane's driving past the Rotary every time she comes up. And it's just another example of reaching out and helping people. I've seen over the years, good commissions and half decent staff. Then you get a really good commission, city commission, but then the staff isn't there to back them up. Now here, we've finally got a great commission, you've hired a great manager, he has put together a great team, and what achievements have you all achieved? I mean, Madeira Beach is shining. I've invested my entire adult life here, and how exciting a time. Achieving things that we've only talked about for fifteen and twenty years, finally are coming to fruition. And it's with your leadership, and your leadership steering this ship, it's fantastic. And I'm so glad to be part of it, and as you can tell, the community is happy to be part of it. Shane, I'm behind you a hundred percent, along with everybody else. Thank you so much for your service, and please don't leave us, because we need your help. Thank you.
I'm Dr. Goldberg. I am a gastroenterologist here in this town for twenty-nine years, and I have taken care of Shane, I have taken care of Cheryl, I have taken care of the mayor, and I've taken care of David, and a lot of the people in the audience. And what I can say is, I was thinking about this on the way driving here, Shane and Cheryl work as a team, okay? Yes, all of you guys are a team too, but when I'm in the OR and I see like a polyp, my nurse automatically hands me the instrument that I need. And knowing the two of them very, very well, inside and out, I can tell you that they work as a team. And you, it's a non-verbal thing, he knows what she wants, she knows what he wants, and together, that's what makes the city of Madeira Beach the way it is. And Shane has done amazing things to this city. I mean, I've lived here a really long time, and since he's come in as the city manager, we have grown, we are beautiful, everyone looks at us. And I don't want him to go anywhere, I don't want Cheryl to go anywhere, and I don't want them to have distress anymore, because they both have ulcers in their stomach, okay? And I can vouch for that, okay? So I want them to be healthy, and I want them to continue, and I want them to continue to make this place great. And I'll tell you, I've never seen anybody give two hundred percent, except for those two. And I love them both dearly. Dave, too. Stress, too, over there. So all I can say is, they're the best, and I want them here, and you guys got to do everything in your power to make sure that they stay. Thank you.
I don't have any more cards for this subject.
Is there no complaints?
I've never seen this before.
Well, I know it's been a long evening, and I appreciate everybody coming out and supporting Shane. And, you know, if there was anybody that has anything different to say, sign a card and bring it up here, and you get your three minutes at this stand. But Shane, I'll say it again, you know, five years ago, you said we're going to do it right, and we're not going to do it at all, brother, and you did it right.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, a year ago, if I knew this would have happened, I would have taken different steps. It kills me to know that I probably brought at least an element of embarrassment to Madeira Beach or even Pinellas County, and that was never my intent. I just kind of fell in love with a girl at work and wanted to figure it out. So we got it figured out, I think, you know, after tonight, hopefully we can move on and just get back to work and get back to doing what we did right. With that, I appreciate everybody's comments and support, and if you'll have me, I'll stay as long as you'll keep me.
And I'll tell you, folks, don't be fooled, there's a city to the north that wants this man right now, and they've been, they've been out there trying to put a ring on his finger. So Shane, you know, we want you to stay. Yeah, I think you see the support of your commission, I think you really do support of what the city thinks of you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lister, do you have anything?
I do. It was twenty to zip, so I'm keeping score here. And I think it was Steve Kocheck that said that, you know, we need to get letters out. So I just want to make sure that the commission writes its individual letters and gives them to Amy, and we can send them up in a packet to the ICMA, just to show what we've done to get to this point and how we feel. And so really, how you feel is the most important part. You know, you can look at things and look at things a lot, but it's how you feel. So just write down how you feel, and let's send this up there, and let's get this straightened out. And if the ICMA wants to take him back, that's fine. If the ICMA doesn't want to take him back, that's fine with me, too. Because we have a winner, we have a good city manager, they're good for the city of Madeira Beach, and obviously, with the turnout tonight that we got for the support, and the turnout that we got tonight for the non-support, it just tells me, it speaks volumes. It's just, it's a loud cry, and there's just no doubt in my mind that we need to get this behind us and move forward. So enough said.
All right, and along with that, Commissioner Lister, I'd like to see a recording of this meeting also. Go to the ICMA.
Fantastic.
Well, at this time, I believe I still need to entertain a motion to go ahead and accept the city manager's report. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney? I don't need...
There's no action that needs to be taken.
Okay, it's just a report.
Okay.
Okay. I guess we'll go take a five-minute recess.
If we do have people in the audience that have, do we have more comment cards than Madam Clerk?
For other subjects.
Yeah, I wonder if we should finish public comment, and then we can, that way people can go first.
Okay, I'll finish public comment, and then we'll take a five-minute. Okay. All right. Next public comment. This section is reserved for public comments on matters or concern pertaining to city business and which is not on the agenda. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Madam Seacler.
Pam Rasmussen.
Pam, before you speak, folks, if you're here for that first one, and it's time to go, it's all right to leave. You're not being disrespectful to anybody. No ethics charges will be filed.
Well, thank you very much. I'm not sure how to follow that, but before I get started with what I originally came here for, Shane, Ann and I, a hundred percent. And as an openly gay woman, I know how many times I've been scrutinized for my relationship and who I love. Nobody deserves to do that to you guys. I am here for the twentieth anniversary of the Veterans Boat Parade, and I'm not sure how many of you guys know about that. I was amazed at the time that I've spent over the last couple of months, how many people in this community do not know about this boat parade, and that's unfathomable, because it's about our veterans. I have some cards I left out back, if anybody wants to pick them up. But this is November 12th, it is the day after Veterans Day. It will start and end right across the water here at the Madeira Beach American Legion Post 273. We're looking to get as many boats involved in this as we can. We're trying to make it as big as possible because it is the twentieth and because it is to honor those veterans and make more awareness of what they do for our country. With that, we're trying to make it as big as possible, and thank you to Mr. Crawford, Mayor Palladino, the city of Madeira Beach came on, this year is our title sponsor, and they have helped us move forward with this in leaps and bounds. And the way that we're doing that is, starting very soon, you'll see commercials on TV about the parade, you'll see radio ads or hear radio ads on the radio stations about it. We're going to have several billboards, which in the past, we've only had one, and those will be rotating throughout the county. We are making an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven ad book, and 2,500 copies of that is going to be distributed all throughout the Pinellas County area with sponsors that have been on board with us, information about the parade, and our grand marshals. And we have six grand marshals this year because it's our twentieth anniversary. We chose to pick one from every branch, and we also are including the Merchant Marine this year. So that's a big deal. Also, the things that we're doing bigger and better this year, we're having a huge watch party here at Rock Park that day. It's going to start, we're guessing around ten, because the parade will start at eleven, and we'll have that run till about one. We're going to have a food truck here, there's going to be sponsors, vendors here, military organizations, Pinellas County Sheriff's Department's going to have a vehicle here, EMS will be here, Chief O'Neill's going to let the guys come out with the fire truck, and there's going to be all kinds of fun things for the kids to do. The most important thing I think about that is Crossbridge Church has come on as our volunteer sponsor to head that up. They are going to have a table and a station set up where people can make thank you cards, and then those are going to be delivered to bay pines, to those that are in the hospital and can't make it to the parade. We're also still going to have our boardwalk at John's Pass, the watching and viewing area there, and that will be just as big as it ever has been. Things about the parade that are a little bit different this year, if you belong to a VFW, an American Legion, an AMVET, a DAV... a VFW, an American Legion, an AMVET, a DAV, Alx Lodge, you should have gotten a letter, your commander exalted ruler should have gotten a letter. We're reinstituting something we've done in the past. If you belong to one of those organizations and you can get a boat entered into the parade, you will be in a separate category and that category will get one winner that will be a $300 check go to that individual boat. And whoever they represent will write a check to that organization for their favorite veteran charity. Another thing that we're instituting this year, a $300 participation award. So anyone that enters into the parade, just because you're in the parade, if you don't win, you can just throw flags on it, whatever you wanted to do. Enter the parade, do the parade, come back to the American Legion, spend the afternoon with us at the Legion, put your number in the pot. We'll pull one number out and that person will win $300, as well as they could be entered to win any of the other awards. The other big thing that we're doing this year is we're having a yard party. So people that live along the parade route, we want you to know about it, we want you to have a party, we want you to have your friends out there, have a big party. You can get registered to do that on our website and the boat captains are going to pick one winner of all those yards. And that person will win a Komodo Joe Grill, which is, if you don't know what that is, it's like the knockoff version of a green egg. So again, thank you for all the city's support and just help us make this bigger and better than we already are trying to do. And come November 12th, either here, John's Pines, or the American Legion. And we also are going to be having a flyover that day. It's going to be two T-6 Warbirds from World War II.
And just a couple of things that add to that. Also, I know working with the VFW, the commander over there, Ron, has contacted Captain Shepherd because he went through me. They have found some World War II veterans and, you know, it's a shame we're losing that great generation and we actually have to go out there and find those veterans. And being, actually and including the Merchant Marines, I guess, it puts me in that category.
There you go. And thank you for your help with trying to get those veterans. It's amazing the amount of response we've gotten just the last week or two. You know, we were struggling to find them. We have so many now, I have a waiting list and we're doing our best to try and get a second boat. And we shouldn't have any problems getting that second boat filled up as well.
Outstanding. Thank you very much.
Sorry to take you long.
And yes, Reese, I know you're bringing the military vehicles down.
If you get the World War II vets here and they want to go for a ride down the beach, I'll bring a troop transporter to them. And I'll take them for rides down the beach, but give me escort, I go slow.
I don't know if I get you an escort, but why don't you get with Captain Shepherd and the committee and let them know so it'll be worked out. I want to go for a ride.
I can bring some of his vehicles up here for that standing display that we're going to use while the.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Thank you, Pam.
Lynn Piotti, since you just put public comment, I wasn't sure. Steve Koczek. Jeff Baggins. That's it. Until we get to other subjects.
Closing public comment, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
This Shane, Shane is the...
At this time, I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I so moved.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. City Managers, are any comments from staff?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the only thing that we ask is that you take them up separately so that there can be conversation about both, especially item number two. We do have the homeowners in the audience that want to at least be recognized or the issue discussed with. So if you can just take items one and two separately, that'd be staff's recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, I amend my motion to authorize expenditure to creative bus sales in the amount of fifty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars for a twenty-one passenger bus in accordance with the cooperative purchasing program of the Houston Galveston Area Council Government's bid number BT-01-14.
A second.
I have a motion and a second for consent agenda item number one. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our rec director, Mr. Andrews, is in the audience and I, just for transparency sake, I'd like to invite him up to the podium, have you walk through the need for the passenger bus and obviously how we purchase it, I believe is on state bid. Nick, can we turn on the mic on the podium, please?
Oh, there we go. Good evening. I'm kind of bummed out. I thought all those people were here to hear about the bus. But anyway, guys, we, I spoke to you guys about this going back about six months ago. We are kind of blowing out our existing bus. We're gonna keep our, obviously, our buses working fine, but we have reached our capacity as far as for our aftercare down at the rec center. We're getting this bus to kind of add another, we've got a waiting list of eight people right now. So I really hate turning children away that need services during the day. So I may have to, hopefully, I'm not gonna have to come to you to blow out the building and try to put another level on the recreation building. But we got about, we've had as many as seventy kids there during the course of a day, which is capacity for the rec center right now. So we're gonna get creative and maybe bring some of the, half the kids over, or a portion of the kids over here to the city center room. But we definitely need more transportation because we can't get all those kids onto a bus with the counselors and everything else to get them back from school. So that's one of the reasons why we're doing it. The second is you guys are so gracious to grant us a little bit of money to start a senior programming. And we are having our first trip, we're not using the new bus, obviously. We're having our first trip with the Madeira Beach Social Club. We're going to the Chocolate Factory over in Bel Air. I have absolutely no idea what it is. They're all excited about it, though. So this should be a kind of a fun trip to kind of get it going. But they've come up with a bunch of different ideas. The bridge players have come up with all kinds of ideas about going to the casino and things like that. And this is gonna give us flexibility in order to do that. So it's a new program. I don't know exactly what to expect, or I don't have an itinerary or a plan right now exactly month to month of what we're gonna do. But we're gonna do some cool stuff. So, but we need the transportation in order to do that because if we take it out during the day, we have to have some transportation back for the kids in the afternoon. So we'll get it all figured out and worked out, but we definitely need the transportation in order to do so.
And Mr. Andrews, you know, you've done an outstanding job in, like I said, owning a home across the street from the rec center is a joy. Every time I walk out, I mean, especially in the afternoons when you got the kids there, I think you gotta, do you have bands over there practicing, high school bands?
Yeah, well, we have, some of the kids are in the band and they take their trumpets out and start playing.
And I hate to always use, you know, or hear, or even from elected officials for government, you know, well, it's in the budget. Well, it is, this bus is in the budget, but it's well needed. And what you've done, expanding that program with the kids, is outstanding.
Thank you.
Just a little note, I'd really like to give a little shout out because it does have to do with the rec center. Congressman Jolly is working very hard on getting that dock permit going through the National Fisheries. So we can get that fishing dock out there so those kids can also, you know, get a little bit more time learning about the waters around here in Madeira Beach.
Excellent.
But outstanding job, your staff, you and your staff, outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have any questions for the rec director?
No.
Nope.
Free.
Free to go.
Well, unless, see, manager has something.
Oh, no, no.
Again, this is staff recommendation is for approval of the purchase, Mr. Mayor.
All right, is there any further comments from the commission?
I'll take you.
Is there any further comments? Madam Seaclore?
Vice Mayor Gobai?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Mayor Palladino?
Yes. At this time, I will entertain a motion for consent agenda item number two.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Is it coming up correctly on your iPads? It's an authorization of expenditures of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars? It's an emergency purchase?
I was going to read it. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for consent agenda item two, authorization of expenditures to Midcoast Construction Enterprises in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty cents for stormwater emergency improvements.
Second.
That would be your motion, right?
I just, I just entertain for that motion.
No, so...
Commissioner Hodges was the first and Commissioner Lister was the second. Am I correct on that, Madam Seaclore? Mr. State Manager, any comments from staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and commission members. You know, we try as a staff to be as proactive as possible. And I feel bad for my colleague, Dave Marscano, who has the title of Public Works Director amongst others, because he sometimes has to be reactive in nature, no matter how hard he tries to be proactive. And there are parts of this town that are just subject to having to be reactive. And in this instance, we have some city-owned pipes that run under residences and those pipes are failing. And those, the owners of the homes are in the audience tonight. And it's in Dave's job description to have to deal with this. And it's not the most pleasant of experiences to go to a homeowner and say, yeah, we have a pipe underneath your home and it's collapsing. So with that, the folks are in the audience, but I wanted, I wanted Dave to have the floor. Again, we don't look at an expenditure like this as something that's flippant, that we just say, oh, yeah, let's just breeze this through. But this, this has to be done. This is a liability of the city. It's a reactive process. The process isn't complete, but I did authorize Dave, obviously, to move forward because it's a matter of public safety and frankly, life, for that matter. And so with that, Dave, I'll give you the floor. You can kind of walk the commission through it. But the authorization from the city manager's office has already been given to go ahead and proceed. But we do need your final approval based off of what Dave provides you tonight.
And this project includes the home on Bay Shore, which Shane already expressed to you, has a stormwater pipe that runs underneath the house and underneath the hot tub in the backyard. What this price does include is we had two stormwater pipes that we came across. One over on Bay Shore and we have another pipe that goes under the portion of some homes over on Parsley. The price that you see in front of you today is to correct these two problems. It's never our intention to have a stormwater pipe under or under somebody's property. How we got there is not important at this point. What's important is moving forward and correcting this problem. And we will all be there with very close eyes as we go through this process of filling up the stormwater pipe to make sure that we secure these people's foundations for their homes and give them some security when we have these storms rolling through. We've got a week now of low tides that's gonna enable us to really get in there. We're already moving. And when we go out there to indeed fix this and look at it, there'll be several of us out there ensuring that it's done properly, the pipes filled properly. We'll have transits set up on several different areas of the home. And my eyes will be on it along with our engineer, Marcy. And I'm sure the homeowners will be out there with us, too. This is something that is a resume builder for both of us. Marcy and I, I've never come across this before. And hopefully, I don't believe, I'm pretty intimate and personal with every pipe in this town now as far as stormwater goes. And I, we don't have any of these other issues. But with the old concrete pipes, they have settling in front of their house now. They have settling of their pavers. Not to frighten it, any, make it any more frightening than it already is, but we're working on it now. And staff's recommendation would please be for approval.
Mr. Mayor, too, I think, and not to cut you off, Dave, but you just struck a chord with me, you know, people that say, well, it's in the budget, so go ahead and spend it. In this instance, I don't, again, I don't want to be flippant with the dollar amount. But as we sweep the city of Madeira Beach, so to speak, with stormwater corrections and road improvements, we would have spent this money when we got to this situation because we would have obviously found this problem. So as we, I don't want to say that we're gonna save money when we get there, but obviously, this type of expenditure would have occurred once we got to that point, however we proceed with our road projects. So it's not money out the window. It would have had to be improved at some point. But obviously, now is the time because it's failing.
Thank you, Mr. State Manager. Commissioner Lister?
Yeah, question for you, David. You said there is some shifting of the dirt around the house. Has the house shifted at all?
No, sir. I don't believe the house has shifted at all. We're going to take some good videotape and I don't think we've had any shifting. What we've had is settling of the pavers, I think, in the front yard is the biggest thing. And the pipe actually goes under the hot tub, too. So there's, there's no, there's nothing structural that we see. And Matt is the contractor on the project. He's already into it and we haven't seen any of that.
Help me visualize the fix. Are we putting it back in the same place? Are we moving the drainage safer?
Absolutely not putting it back. It will, and at some point, I can show you the plans. But the pipe is going to go in between the two houses. It will, it'll come out of the box, run to the corner of the property and then run down the property line out to the seawall. It currently runs at an angle out of the box directly under their home.
Fantastic. Yeah, I absolutely have no problem with the emergency.
And we're gonna fill, if I should probably, we're gonna put flowable fill from both ends. And then as we're doing the flowable fill, like I said, we'll have transits set up. We'll be, and it just won't be Dave. It'll be Marcy and I'll probably have Tina and a couple other folks from Dull out there as we go through this process.
Sure. Thank you, Dave.
Yes, sir.
Dave, just before we proceed, the city attorney reminded me and he brings up a valid point. Unless you folks want to own the pipe and we're happy to give it to you, we'll probably have to get some sort of easement to run that pipe along those, along those two pieces of property. But we can get with you afterwards and get that ironed out. That should be...
That's a conversation that we've...
That's a simple process.
Yes, that's a conversation that we've had. And thankfully, thank you, the homeowners have worked with us without that easement and allow us to get this thing taken care of. Al Carrier will have all the paperwork to you, Tom, for that easement.
Unless you want the pipe, you can, you're gonna have it.
All right, is there any further comment? Would y'all like to say anything? And thank you very much for coming tonight and, like I said, having the chance to speak with you earlier. I can't say enough about Dave Marscano. I mean, I've known the man for like, say, twenty, twenty-five years, worked with him due to Marina and watched him, what a great job he's doing as the Public Works Manager. You know, most cities hire people to do the Cameron of pipes. Dave's out there doing it personally along with his assistants. So it's hands-on. We're seeing exactly what, we're not worried about reports. And Dave, thank you very much to you and your staff. Y'all do an outstanding job.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I'd like to say, before we, you know, if you see something, say something. And I appreciate you guys doing that because, you know, we can't watch everything and we know we have bad pipes in the city. We just know that's gonna happen. And so with you coming forward and saying, look, I think we've got some issues here, we can fix it before your house is damaged or anybody gets hurt. That's our, that's our primary goal and we do appreciate that. So thank you for being proactive with that, also with you too, Dave.
Madam Seaclore, would you please call the rule?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gobai?
Yes.
Excuse me. Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
All right, moving on to contracts and agreements. First up, award of beach concessions to Saltwater Destinations. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate everybody still staying in the audience. I'm gonna steal a joke from the city attorney. You guys want to guess who Saltwater Destinations is in the audience? It's the three beards in the back over there.
The tanist people.
They do have a nice tan. Just a little bit of background so you guys know that, again, everything was followed as procedure dictates. We had a beach concession vendor at Archibald Park. We bid that out along with the Snack Shack separately, per the advice of the Federal Parks Association. And that was very early on in my tenure. And then we decided, you know, maybe it would be great to have some vending along the beaches at some of our walkovers. So we bid it out again. Then we had a third vendor. And so when the beach concessions at Archibald Park and the Snack Shack came up, I think you may remember this. First of all, you had, there was a lot of controversy about the Snack Shack before I arrived and the Frank Chevis issue and all that stuff. I think a lot of people bid on the concessions, you know, renting chairs and umbrellas and that kind of thing, which is what these folks do amongst a lot more, thinking that they may get the Snack Shack as well. So they maybe hedged their bid on one to see if they could get the other one, so on and so forth. And I think that's what happened to the company. So basically, what happened was one company got the Snack Shack and one company got the beach concessions, thinking that they were in a good running for the Snack Shack and frankly, overbid. And so there was a clause in their contract. A very good group of people. The owner was a gentleman out at Dunn-Eating. That both the city attorney and I know, one of the most reputable people I know. And he operated at a loss for about two years. I mean, a significant loss. And we had a conversation and, you know, he frankly stated, Shane, I don't mind operating at a loss because I want to maintain a relationship with Madeira Beach, which just goes to show what we've started here. Here's a guy, you know, he's willing to take a loss on a business just to be part of the community. But we had that conversation one too many times for me and I went to the gentleman and I said, you know, it's okay. You know, we can be friends. We'll find something else to do business with or whatever, but I feel guilty with you running this at a loss. Feel free to exercise your clause. And there was a clause in the contract that said, you know, for ninety days, you know, I can bow out. And so he thanked me for that and he respectfully bowed out. So that's the long version of saying, we have beach concessions vending available at Archibald Park. Coincidentally, at the exact same time the contract expired for the beach concession or beach vending along the walkovers throughout Madeira Beach. So when that happened, I took it upon myself to issue an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications. It's a little bit different than a bid process because the bid process kind of caught us in the, you know what, the last time around. And frankly, and I hope you guys don't take this insultingly, there, it's not as simple as it sounds, renting chairs and umbrellas. There's a science to it, just like anything. And so I wanted to see, you know, what the experts, the people that are doing it would propose, instead of me saying, just give me your best bid. And so we, I put it out for bid. We received two bids and with, I don't want to say anything bad about the other bidder, but these, this bid certainly shined. I created a evaluation committee. This isn't just my decision. I took a member of Dave's staff from Public Works and a member from the rec staff. So it was a good mix of employees that will interact with these folks every day and it was a unanimous decision. And so with that, and I think this has been already in front of you before, to give it to them, but we had to negotiate the contract. Mr. Tanali and I sat down with these gentlemen and worked out a deal that we think is beneficial to the city. It's certainly not the money that we were reaping before, but Vince and I recognized that when we put the budget together. And what we estimated for a reasonable revenue stream is within budget with doing business with these gentlemen. So I appreciate these guys sitting through what they had to sit through to get to this point. But that's my long-winded way of saying, I'm very confident in this contract. I'm impressed with what they've done. I've seen their work in other communities and I can't wait to see what they bring to Madeira Beach there. They literally have a following. It's kind of like a, like a bunch of rock stars we got here that are gonna be working for us. So and then they even dress the part. So with that, Mr. Mayor, this is Saltwater Destinations. And I would, there is an amended contract in front of you. This did go in front of the Federal Parks Association. They had two very minor, if the city attorney would agree with me, changes that they just wanted to make to the contract. And the city attorney drafted the contract and staff is recommending approval so these boys can get to work.
Gentlemen, good evening. Just wanted to go ahead and introduce yourselves real quick. And actually, I know I had a chance for the brief conversation and I dig howl at two y'all are with the beach. I mean, I think the turtle stuff, keeping things clean, keeping it rocking and rolling. And I know I'm old, so saying those kind of things probably looks a little strange, but I'm still cool, even though I'm old. Sorry, Shane, you've been talking all night, so I get to talk a little. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
First and foremost, we can't be more thankful to just even be standing here in front of you guys right now, especially after, you know, kind of listening to everything that you guys have been saying over the past two meetings that we've been a part of with you guys. This is just, with your prayer that you led into, it just blew me away and gave me tingles. You know, just chills down just every part of my body and I appreciate, you know, just even being here right now to even hopefully engage in business with you guys. We have a strong respect for the beach and a strong respect for people that come to the beach, all the guests and all the local residents. And we can't wait to prove that to you guys. We have like the strongest team right now and we're the hardest workers. We have like the strongest team right now and we're the hardest workers that you guys will ever see and I can guarantee you that. And we just, like I said, I can't thank Shane enough for everything that he's been doing and I just can't wait to be a part of your community if you'll let us. So that's pretty much what I have to say. Hopefully we'll be here and we can prove that to you guys.
Commissioners, any questions? At this time, I will entertain a motion for the award of beach concessions to Saltwater Destinations.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Is there any further comments from staff?
No, the only thing I would mention to these gentlemen is we do have kind of a lengthy agenda and I wouldn't want to put you through another hour of that. So if you, if you do want to come on in tomorrow to sign contracts, if you, if you want to get out of here.
Absolutely, we would love to.
All right. Like I said, there's no, we're not insulted if you want to get out of here tonight and we'll do business tomorrow. So Amy can get the signatures that she needs from this group tonight and we'll, we'll sit down and put ink to paper tomorrow.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for this opportunity. We won't let you down.
Is there any further comments? Namacy Clerk?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Commissioner Lister?
Absolutely.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gobai?
Yes.
Guys, congratulations. Look forward to seeing you all out there. And Mr. City Manager, I can't say rock and roll, can I?
You can say rock and roll, man. You're a cool guy.
Is that right?
You got.
Yeah, good. Really?
Yep.
I almost got a haircut like you, too. All right, next, it's just I'll entertain a motion for authorization of expenditures to W and A Cleaning Services in the amount of one hundred and one thousand six hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty-four cents for condes, excuse me, condes, condes, services in, thank you, in accordance with change order proposal number two. Sorry about that, a little late.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Is there any comments from staff?
Yes, that number is not as ugly as it appears. There's an original contract. What we're doing is increasing that contract, twenty-one thousand seven hundred dollars. Everybody knows Angel and Wanda, they've become facets of the City Hall family and when we first got into the city center, we didn't know frankly what the heck was going to happen, you know? And so we tried to, anyway, we tried a number, a number of different methods to have, have the facilities cleaned and we're actually going back to what we started out with. And so this adds Angel's company to the rec center. Angel is also under contract after a wedding, you know, he'll come on in and clean after a birthday party, that type of thing. But this puts him basically blanketing the city center, which talk about drive and ethics and hard work, you can't find a harder worker. And Amy has supervised the custodial part of this and we couldn't do better than this in its existing contract. I, I certainly wouldn't want to just put out one building, you know, to bid. He's an unbelievable part of the family and staff recommendations, obviously, for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Is there any comments from the commission? And I hate to say it, but, you know, being, spending so much time around here, the guy actually sits there and I watch him, wipes each individual hand down. I've seen him outside with ladder him, you know, Angel actually out there doing it and he does a great job.
He does all his own work.
He does a great job. Is there any further comments? Namacy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gobai?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
All right, next, at this time I'll entertain a motion for authorization of Madeira Beach Bus Shelter Maintenance Agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I want to make a, I jumped in that, didn't I?
Yeah.
I want to make a motion that we authorize the Madeira Beach Bus Shelter Maintenance Agreement.
Second.
Thank you.
Have a motion of second. Mr. City Manager, is there any comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, all of this says is that we will maintain that bus shelter. So that's basically a public works feature. You know, we're not usually liable for emptying the garbage on PSTA's bus shelters and things of that sort. Nothing against PSTA, but Dave's folks usually end up doing that. If something needs to be cleaned up, we just take care of that because by the time you put the work order in, a couple of days elapses. So basically what this is saying is we're going to maintain that bus shelters. We're treating it as it's our, our own.
That's the umbrellas.
That's the one.
Terry umbrellas.
The Lister umbrella.
You're going to put like TL on them?
The first of many. It's catching on. I've had a couple of emails on it already.
We've gotten a lot of emails on it.
It's catching on.
Is there any further comment?
If, if anybody's not seeing it, it's down by one hundred and twenty-ninth on the Gulf Boulevard. Go down and take a look at it. It's a umbrella. It's an umbrella bus stop. It's, it's a beachy umbrella bus stop.
So it's like an umbrella, but beachy.
It only took us four years, Mr. Lister, but we got it done for you.
Good things take time.
Namacy Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gobai?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
That'd be yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Mayor Palladino?
Terry, yes. Next, authorization of expenditures via Public Risk Insurance Agency in the amount of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-five cents for property casualty and liability insurance, including a two-year workers' compensation rate agreement. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I saw a move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Have a motion of second, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, this is a routine expenditure. We're asking for a two-year rate agreement on the workers' comp insurance because there are changes being done at the state and if we can extend it for two years, we avoid those additional costs.
Outstanding. Is there any further comments?
No comments.
Namacy Clerk?
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Vice Mayor Gobai?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion for authorization of second amendment to services agreement with Hubbard Sea Adventures Incorporated.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion of second, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is mostly my, my fault. When we initially created the contract with Hubbard Sea Adventure, which we still, Amy, do we have signatures on that initial contract? I wish we would have grabbed them when he was here. We came up with a relatively tedious and antiquated way to pay them and it basically meant that Vince was going to have to take a look at their sales and go through their books and look at their receipts and frankly Vince is enough to do. And so I, I actually talked to Vince about saying, we've got twenty-five thou, you know, how I am with numbers, we've got twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget, can we divide it by twelve and just issue him a check every once a month? And Vince with a grin on his face kind of said, well, finally Crawford, he makes sense, so let's go ahead and do that. So basically, that's the very simple version of what this agreement says. You guys budgeted twenty-five grand. We planned on giving them twenty-five grand for, I think, the first two years, maybe three years. That's what you're doing. We're just simplifying the paying process so it takes fifteen hours of work out of the finance department down to about ten minutes.
Is there any comments from the commission?
No comments.
Is there any further comments?
Absolutely.
Namacy Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gobai?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on, Mr. Tenali, the one thing that I do want to make sure is that we don't cut a check until we have signed contracts. If we don't even have the initial contract signed.
You do have the initial, we have the first.
Okay, so we, let's make sure we get that taken care of and then move on. But I'm sure he'll be eager to come on in and sign it, so.
All right, moving forward, unfinished business. Resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-seven, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Well, I'd like to read that resolution, but we need to make sure that we get the vote in place so that we can put the name, nomination name in the resolution prior to actually approving the resolution. So I think the city clerk is passing out the ballot and if you could make your vote in the appropriate box and then pass it down to the city clerk.
I'll collect it.
She will tabulate them. We will then put it in the resolution and I will read that resolution by title only. Is that acceptable? Okay.
Fantastic.
Oh, just big one? Just initial that then? Okay. Yes. The votes are unanimous for Joanne Kennedy.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll read that resolution by title only with the understanding that in section one, you're going to place into that resolution Joanne Kennedy's name. Resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-seven, a resolution of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida recommending appointment of a member to the joint Pinellas County Metropolitan Planning Organization and providing for an effective date. That was reading of resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-seven by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion of second. And there's no sense for any comments from staff. I'd like to say that Commissioner Kennedy has done an outstanding job with Pinellas Forward and the way we look at it on the big seat, the discussion, because it was kind of a little bit of a conflict with, with some candidates. If somebody wants to start to look at doing that in two years, they're actually going to start shadowing the person that's in there now so we can get a good rotation. But with rotations of elected officials going into that, into that seat, being able to, you know, stay on pace with what's going on instead of starting cold and learning everything from, from scratch. So commissioners, thank you very much and I'm sure Commissioner Kennedy will appreciate your support. Namacy Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gobai?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Next ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero-seven, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero-seven, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending chapter ninety, concurrency management of the code of ordinances, amending section ninety dash two, deleting various definitions relating to school concurrency, revising the definition of public schools interlocal agreement and creating definitions for deficient facility, land development regulatory system, mobility plan, new peak hour trip, peak hour, pre-existing use, transportation management plan and transportation management system. Amending sections ninety dash four, ninety dash five, ninety dash seven and ninety dash eight to delete the provisions relating to school concurrency. Amending section ninety dash nine and section ninety dash ten in their entirety to repeal the transportation concurrency requirements and to establish a transportation management system, creating section ninety dash eleven, providing for application of transportation management plan strategies to deficient road corridors, creating section ninety dash twelve, providing for methodology of determination of trip generation, renumbering section ninety dash eleven to ninety dash thirteen, renumbering section ninety dash twelve to ninety dash fourteen and deleting the adopted level of service for arterial and collector roads, renumbering section ninety dash thirteen to ninety dash fifteen and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero-seven by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. This commission pass ordinance two thousand sixteen dash oh-seven on second and final reading.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Is there any comments from staff? Ms. Orton?
Mr. Serna will be presenting these cases.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Louis Serna with Calvin Giordano and Associates, providing planning services on this item. I'm just available to answer any of your questions that you may have on this. This was presented to you originally in July for the first reading. This is the land development code revisions to eliminate school and transportation concurrency. It's in response to the Metropolitan Planning Organization requesting that all municipalities in the county adopt a mobility management system that's consistent with what they're doing. So all, all the communities are on the same page. And then also the Florida legislature eliminated, eliminated the requirement for school concurrency. So the, so the local school board has requested through the interlocal agreement with Madeira Beach that, that the city do away with school concurrency. There's still going to be school, coordination of school facilities planning, but the concurrency requirement will be eliminated. And just trying to be brief, but if there's any questions you have, again, these are related to other government organizations requiring the, requesting that the city do adopt these changes for consistency purposes.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Is there any further questions? Namacy Clerk, please call the roll.
I just want to make sure, Mayor, this is a public hearing. I know that you put your head up. You, you're asking the public if.
Yes, yes. Is there any further comment? Yes.
Okay, okay.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Vice Mayor Gobai?
Yes.
Next ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero-eight, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners, ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero-eight, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the goals, objectives and policies of the transportation element of the comprehensive plan of the city of Madeira Beach to delete transportation concurrency, to provide for a multimodal transportation system that manages the impacts of development projects, increases mobility and mitigates improvements consistent with the Metropolitan Planning Organization's long-range transportation plan and the Pinellas County Mobility Plan, amending the intergovernmental coordination element to revise concurrency references to mobility management and update a reference to the interlocal agreement with the school board of Pinellas County regarding the coordination of land use and public school facilities planning, amending the capital improvements element to support the establishment of a multimodal transportation system in accordance with the Pinellas County Mobility Plan and to eliminate the public schools level of service standard and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero-eight by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero-eight.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any comments from staff?
Good evening. Louis Serna again with Calvin Giordano and Associates. This is the adoption of the ordinance amending the comprehensive plan to reflect the transportation concurrency items that I mentioned earlier. This was transmitted to the state. We did review, we did receive comments from the state reviewing agencies, including the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, and they did not identify any comments in regard to important state resources. regard to important state resources. So our recommendation is that you adopt this ordinance for consistency with what the Metropolitan Planning Organization is proposing.
Just one quick question. How many times do they change this? Do they, do they update it every five years, every, with long-range spreading? Give me, when does the NPO come in and do this? Do they, when's the last time we did it?
Well, what, what they've done in this case is they've done a wholesale revision of getting rid of transportation concurrency as we know it and replacing it with what's called a mobility management system. It's going to be very similar in terms of day-to-day operations of what's going on now. Instead of paying impact fees, the developers will pay what are called mobility fees, but the fees are the same. But it's basically doing, looking at transportation from a more holistic system. They should not be making any large changes like this in the foreseeable future, so this is quite a significant change.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Is there any further comment from the commission?
Isn't NPO and PPC combined and now they're called...
It's Pinellas Forward.
Okay.
It is.
I keep referring to NPO, but it's Forward Pinellas.
Forward Pinellas, yeah. Yes. Thank you.
Other questions? Is there any further questions from the audience? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gobahi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Next ordinance 2016-09, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, ordinance 2016-09, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the conservation and coastal management element of the comprehensive plan of the city of Madeira Beach, revising the goals, policies, and objectives of the conservation and coastal management element to delete reference to acceptable roadway levels of service and policy 1.8.1, to revise goal 2, to include references to high-water events, to add objectives and policies regarding flooding and sea level rise, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of ordinance 2016-09 by title only.
At this time I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. Second. Ordinance.
I have a motion a second. Actually, for staff, I have a question. You know, I received an email about a couple of these ordinance, I believe this is one of them, that they would cause some kind of conflict or that the city could be sued or another community is being sued over the same thing. And I kind of look at this, it's kind of like what we're doing is housekeeping here, keeping it up with the state regulations and doing actually what we're required to do. And this works for our CRS rating also. So I don't see where the city would be doing anything wrong by doing this from the email I received, and I believe I forwarded that email along to staff, so I think, Ms. Orton, you're familiar with it. And I'd like to hear the comments from staff at that time on this.
I saw the email too.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, I, I did see the email. This item is for adoption of changes to the conservation and coastal management element to establish policies regarding sea level rise. It's in response to state law that was passed in 2015. These amendments were transmitted to the state. They, again, did not have any comments in regard to significant state resources, and therefore the state will not be issuing a challenge if this is adopted, and we are recommending that it's adopted. The concern and the reason for our recommendation is that the law was passed in 2015, and if the, if the city does not adopt these policy changes, a private, a private party could bring a challenge and say that the city is not in compliance with state regulations, so...
So if we do not adopt them?
That's right. Now, the state recommended that we, that the city consider changing the adoption date or addressing this in 2022. So DEO said that the city was not required to do this until 2022, but we think for, in an abundance of caution and to be consistent with state law, that something get passed now when additional data becomes available in the future, these can be updated, but just for legal coverage to have these adopted now as, as proposed.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further questions from the commission? Is there any further comments from the audience? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gobahi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next ordinance 2016-10, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, ordinance 2016-10, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the public school facilities element of the comprehensive plan of the city of Madeira Beach to delete objectives 2, 3, and 4, as well as the policies under those objectives, renumbering objectives 5, 6, and 7, 5, 6, 7, and 8, rather, as well as the policies under those objectives, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of ordinance 2016-10 by title only.
At this time I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion. This commission pass ordinance 2016-10 on second and final reading, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Have a motion a second. Any comments from staff?
This is the amendment to the public school facilities element and to reflect the elimination of the local requirement for school concurrency, again, to be consistent with the interlocal agreement between the school district and the city, so we're recommending approval.
Any questions from the commission?
No comments, sir. No questions.
Is there any further comment from the audience? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gobahi?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Next ordinance 2016-11, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
I will read that by title, and I want to preface this by, with a statement that although this is saying that this is the second reading, it's going to require a third reading of this ordinance, so this is not the final reading of this ordinance. The reason it's going to require a third reading is, is there has been substantial changes or substantive changes since the first reading, and as an abundance of caution, I want to make sure that the public has at, at least at two public hearings in its revised state. So I'll go ahead and read that ordinance 2016-11 with the understanding that this is not the adoption hearing, that will be the next public hearing. Ordinance 2016-11, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending in its entirety Chapter 94 of the Code of Ordinances relating to flood damage prevention and flood hazard management, adopting floodplain management regulations, providing for the regulations to be known as the floodplain management ordinance, establishing minimum requirements in conjunction with the Florida Building Code to minimize public and private losses due to flooding through the regulation of development and flood hazard areas, adopting definitions, adopting flood insurance rate maps to serve as the minimum basis for establishing flood hazard areas, providing for the designation of, designation authority and duties of a floodplain administrator, providing for permitting and inspection provisions within flood hazard areas, providing for variances and appeals to be heard by special magistrate, providing regulation for violation of the floodplain management ordinance, providing for terms not defined by the floodplain management ordinance or the Florida Building Code, adopting local technical amendments to the Florida Building Code, and providing for an effective date. That was the second reading of ordinance 2016-11 by title only.
At this time I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, to pass and adopt ordinance 2016-11.
Just, just to pass, it's not to adopt?
Yes, sir. Just to pass.
Second. Have a motion a second. Is there any comments from staff?
This was brought before the commission last month. We sent it to the, the Florida Division of Emergency Management Services. They had a few corrections that we needed to make in the body in order for it to be consistent with FEMA, so we made those changes, and as the city attorney said, we will bring it back again for a third reading.
Hey, Michelle, real quick, once again, this works with flood insurance, and by this working, this will probably in the long run save residents anywhere between 18% to 20% on their flood insurance, is that correct? On the CRS numbers?
Currently, we receive a 20% discount.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And so it, it does work with our, our CRS.
Thank you. Is there any further comment? Madam City Clerk?
Mayor, I have a question.
I don't have a motion.
Well, I thought I had a motion already. I apologize. Actually, hold on a second. At this time I'll entertain a motion for 2016-11.
I thought I made that motion.
You do.
Yeah.
He did. It was here because I wanted to make sure that we understood that it wasn't for adoption.
See, Amy, you got me questioning myself.
I'm sorry. You were second?
I seconded.
And the Vice Mayor wanted to make a comment.
Yes, just a question. I know we had discussed this before, as far as the, the two feet of freeboard and the height requirements, would that automatically give the developers to measure from two feet above the base, or would we have to come back and modify that in the form of another code change?
According to this document, it is base flood elevation plus two feet, and then we'll begin measuring from that point.
So it's not from BFE, it's from BFE plus two?
From, plus two.
All right. Just wanted to make that clear, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Madam City Clerk?
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gobahi?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
All right, new business. Resolution 2016-28, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Can I just make sure that, you know, on the last one, I'm not sure that you opened it up for public comment, and I know that we had an issue with the motion. Was it open, the floor open for public comment? If not, I'd kind of like you to do that, Mayor, if there's any additional public comment, because I don't think that was done. I want to make sure that we do that. If, if there is public comment, then we go ahead and have that motion again. Any...
And actually, it'll, it'll be very quick, so while, at this time I'll entertain a motion for ordinance 2016-11. You want me to redo the motion, and I'll open up the floor again?
No, no, I just want you to open up the floor to make sure that there is no comment, because I don't think it was, the floor was open for public hearing.
Okay. At this time I'll open up the floor for any comments for ordinance 2016-11.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there were no comments, so we can move on to the next technical things. I'm just trying to make sure.
No, thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Next, under new business is resolution 2016-28. You've asked me to read that by title only. The title of that resolution is a resolution of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2016 budget by decreasing capital outlay expenditures in the amount of $2,793,251.74, amending the fiscal year 2017 budget by increasing capital outlay expenditures in the amount of $2,793, I'm sorry, $2,793,251.74, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of resolution 2016-28 by title only.
At this time I'll entertain a motion.
I'd so moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Have a motion a second. Is there any comments from staff, Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, I think it's very obvious to everyone, we're just rolling over 2016 to 2017, any capital projects that we either didn't get started or in the middle or in process.
Thank you. Is there any further comments from the commission? Is there any further comments from the audience? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gobahi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next ordinance 2016-12, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Yes, this is ordinance 2016-12, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending Section 82-2 of the Code of Ordinances to revise the definition of condo hotel and providing for an effective date. That was reading of ordinance 2016-12 by title only. Before you get a motion, we need to address a couple of different issues. I wanted, because of the format of the ordinance itself, so that we all understand what you're adopting. You'll see that the ordinance on page number two of three, that there are some different colored language, and I wanted to tell you what is being proposed by city staff, what was basically a correction, and what was being proposed by the applicant developer. If you would look at the easy one, under paragraph two, where it talks about the occupational license, we've just changed that to the correct name that we have now. You remember a couple of years ago, the state changed the name from occupational license to make it more clear, it's not really a license, it's a tax. And so we changed the name from an occupational license to a business tax receipt, just to make it clear and consistent with your code. So that stays in no matter what. In paragraph eight, it refers to a change from 60 to 90 days for, within a calendar year, and then again, from 60 down to 30 days, and we can explain those to you in a, in a few minutes, but that is the suggested and recommended approval by city staff, the 90 and 30 days. And then last, that's in red, and lastly, there was an additional request made by the applicant, and I'm, sorry, the, the planning commission as well, and that is in blue, and that was to delete the word central in reference to the central reservation system. So when you adopt this mo, motion or this ordinance by motion, we need you to tell us what, what portion is going to be included and what is not. In other words, do we strike out the word central or leave the word central in? And city staff can give you a presentation on that before you make your motion, if you would like that.
Commission, with your pleasure.
Let's hear the reasoning.
Okay.
Mayor Commissioners, the city of Madeira Beach relies heavily on tourism. Currently, there are a limited number of motels, hotels within the city limit. Madeira Beach is made up of single-family apartments, duplexes, townhouses, and condo owners. The land development regulation defines tourist dwelling units as condo hotel and motel or hotel. The condo hotel was created to allow for tourism on a short, short-term basis for allowing for a higher density. Developers request the higher density in order to provide greater number of tourist units. And as you can see in the little table I have there, the density rises when you have tourist units from two to, two and a half to four times based on the future land use and the developers' agreement. Condo hotel tourist dwelling units are purchased by individuals or corporations or any other legal entity having membership in an association comprised of owners within the same development. Property owners are permitted to stay in the unit for 60 days a year, no longer than 30 consecutive days, and separated by not less than 60 days. Condo hotel tourist dwelling units are purchased as an investment and not as a residential dwelling unit. Staff has been requested to review this portion of the LDR and consider changing the amount of time a property owner can stay in the unit from 60 days to 120 days, no days of separation, and to remove the central reservation system. Staff has reviewed the Madeira Beach LDR with other beach communities in Pinellas County and throughout Florida, and believes that the Madeira Beach LDR is consistent as it reads now. If the local, the local planning agency reviewed, reviewed this, I'm sorry, if the local planning agency, which they did review, and the Board of Commissioners consider a change in the LDR, staff recommends that the amount of time the property owner is permitted to stay in the unit not be greater than 90 days per calendar year, a 30-day instead of 60-day separation, and maintain the central reservation system. A central reservation system is needed in order for city staff to verify conformance with the provisions established by the LDR. Without a central reservation system, staff will need to go to each individual owner to obtain the records. So I just want to clarify, currently, we have the owner staying in the property for 60 days a year. The, the request we received was for 120. We decided that if, if the commissioners, the commission is in agreement, we could change that to 90 days, kind of a compromise there. And then for the days of separation, they wanted us to remove that altogether. We think that instead of 60 days, we could go down to 30 days on a separation, and as I stated earlier, we would like to keep the central reservation system in the ordinance. So staff recommends approval of ordinance 2016-12 with the changes made in red. The local planning agency, planning commission, recommended approval of staff's recommendation together with the changes to remove the word central as shown in blue. So contingent on this first reading and second and final Board of Commissioners, final Board of Commissioner reading will be on November 15th.
Mr. Mayor, if I can interject, Michelle, who is "we" when we say that we want to reinstate central reservation system?
Oh, this is staff, planning staff has reviewed this ordinance based on the code.
And so...
Oh, I'm sorry. Removing the word central was the local planning agency.
Right, but you're saying that we recommend that it be reinstated. Who is "we"?
Staff. Uh, planning staff.
Okay, so based off of whose recommendation? Like, you know, you keep referencing the...
Staff received a letter from developers that they wanted to make changes to the land development regulations. Staff reviewed it, compared it to the other cities, the other around Pinellas County and the state of Florida, and found that we, as the city of Madeira Beach, in our land development regulations were consistent with the other municipalities. Is that what you're referring to?
Well, I, I guess, is there a higher power that's telling you that the central part needs to be reinstated?
It's just based on professional planning.
Okay. Because we did take this to the plan commission, and they didn't want that removed. I know, I obviously didn't get a chance to talk to Michelle before we made that recommendation, but that certainly would not be the recommendation from the city manager's seat. Again, I, we had, we had the same situation at the plan commission, you know, staff and I don't always have to agree, but I, I think we as a board have to decide whether or not we're going to try to move some of these developments along, and if we can't get these units sold, the buildings aren't going to get built, and then we don't get the tax base, we don't get the people coming to town, so on and so forth. So, you know, if there's a higher power that's going to take a look at this, that's fine, but I would certainly try to make this as development-friendly as possible, and I say that tongue-in-cheek because obviously I'm being ridiculed over the two major developments in town, but I, I don't, we had this conversation at length at the plan commission meeting, and I, I certainly, just being an outsider looking in, see no need for that central reservation system. I'm sure we'll have some comments from the gentlemen that stayed throughout the meeting amongst others, but I think that that's something that we're going to have to discuss yet tonight, and I know it's getting late, but that's a, a big part of this.
So your recommendations to remove the central reservations?
My recommendation is to go along with what the plan commission recommended.
Okay.
So can you tell me, is the city responsible for the reservation system itself? We're going to, we're going to find out how many times the owner comes down and stays in his unit?
The, the, the development will have an association or whatever they decide who will handle their reservations.
And they're going to send, and they're going to forward that information to the city?
The city, it is required to be sent to the city. The city can request it at any time.
Plus also, Ms. Ordinance also, as far as bed taxes, it's shown through the county also, correct? And so the county also is aware of...
The county and the state.
Correct, okay.
This is only making it easier for the owners of the units to stay in their units. It's not making it easier to rent. Is it?
They would go to one central location or one website, and they would book their reservations on that type of setup that they have through the central. Otherwise, each individual property owner or unit owner would need to maintain their records. So if you have 60 units in a building, each one of them will... So, if you have sixty units in a building, each one of them will maintain them, and then the city would need to contact each one to determine if they are following code.
I think the conversation we had at the plan commission meeting was if you live in Tampa, and you have, you buy one of these investment properties, and you're saying, "I don't want to have to go through a central reservation system, I'm sophisticated enough to use Expedia, or Travelocity, or Airbnb, or whatever," and you want to handle it your own, you can, but if you want to go through a reservation system, they can provide one for you as well.
Who pays for the reservation system? I'm not, I'm not clear on that.
The developer.
Okay.
It's just creating flexibility.
Well, I think it creates some flexibility, and I understand Michelle's point, and I think from Michelle's seat, she has to be making this recommendation, I'm just saying from my seat, and I think you're going to hear it from the audience, we have to make it easier to build some of these buildings, or we can't, we've been throwing up enough hurdles already, and we've been pretty easy, but this is, this is a hurdle that's going to keep units from being sold. And if we don't sell, if they don't pre-sell units, the buildings aren't going to get built, so we're at a standstill, so, you know, the bend-don't-break analogy is getting overused, but I think we have to bend on this one a little bit, and I think you're going to hear it from these gentlemen in the audience, that if we don't, if we don't bend, they're not going to sell the units, and then what's, then what's the point?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Last time I would entertain motion, I do want a little more discussion.
Well, just one more question, so the planning commission said, take the central out of the reservation.
Correct.
Because the planning commissions...
Correct, correct. They want to take out the central.
And, you're saying you don't, you want to leave it in?
No, I want it, I want it out. What Michelle is saying is that, from her standpoint, as a planning director, and she's here to be the other, other voice, that she thinks that it should be reinserted. What I'm saying, and what I've heard, and again, no offense to Michelle, but I have to, I have to listen to these guys, and I have to listen to you, and you're going to say, "Why isn't this building getting built? Why isn't, you know, why isn't Sam Lewis proceeding with one of his, you know, projects?" Or, you know, that's a, well, that's a good example, actually. This is it. You know, if he can't pre-sell some units, he's not going to do it, these people, it's an investment property, I get that, but they want to be able to use their investment when they want, frankly, how they want. And, yeah, should it be regulated? Yeah, but do we have to be the regulatory authority that says, "Okay, Travis Palladino, you've, you've been in your unit for thirty days, now you got to get out, and we won't see you for another ninety days," or whatever the case may be? So, they just want some flexibility to use their unit as they see fit.
Exactly, it creates flexibility.
Right.
So, it makes it, yeah.
But from, in the planning world, so that, you know, there is a trade-off, so, you know, it is meant to be almost like a hotel, so the density and, and that gets increased, but if I'm spending a lot of money, and I live in Tampa, and I want to come to my investment property on the beach, and I didn't plan for it, but, you know, it doesn't follow the guidelines, I want to have the flexibility to come use it, so that's what we're trying to do here.
Michelle, can you tell me if there's any other municipalities who have this standard? Or did you just say that most of them have this standard?
No, I researched it, and went through, and looked at the different communities to see what type of standards they had, and they have the, in fact, that's why I went ahead and made the change, instead of the sixty days, the majority of them had ninety, so I went ahead and changed that portion in the ordinance, so that they would have that. And they also have the separation, less than what we had. We had a sixty-day separation, the majority have a thirty-day, so that's why that change was made, because the majority of the communities also had that. And then for a central reservation, the majority also have a central reservation, they have one place that they go that rents the units, because a lot of the people live out of the country, or out of the state, or, you know, we have a lot from Canada that own them, so instead of them having to deal with this on a regular basis, and having the city to contact them if they have questions, you know, it would be in one area instead of contacting everyone else.
So, this is moving us closer to the middle, basically?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So, I'll make a motion that we pass ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twelve, and...
I want to be the motion, the second floor first.
I'll make a motion that we pass two thousand sixteen dash twelve, and that we take out central for the, for the reservation, and replace occupational license with a business receipt, and replace sixty with ninety days for, within the calendar year, for the owner to use it no more than ninety days within the calendar year, and replace the sixty with thirty for the, separated in not less than thirty days. So, that would be the changes that were set by staff.
And recommended by the plan commission.
And recommended by the plan.
Okay, a second.
You have a motion, a second, is there any further comments from staff?
I think that we might have some conversation...
Yeah, I do, I'm going to open up to the floor in a second.
Yep.
Any comments from the floor? Oh, you got a card? There's five people in here.
I'm calling my name, Steve Koechek, not here, Jeff Baggins.
Vince, can you run the clock, just so we stay consistent with everything?
I want to first say something that I don't think eats into my time, that I want to make clear that Madeira Bay, there's a restriction also to the size of the units, and I want to be sure that you understand, Madeira Bay was approved in two thousand three with larger units than the eight hundred and fifty, and that's, the first phase was built that way, the second phase was approved that way. Also, Madeira Bay was approved with residential units involved in the, in the buildings. So, I just wanted to make sure that I would hope that, since it was approved in two thousand three, that at least the size of the units that have already been built, and that are being built, or proposed to be built, are not affected by this, so, since it was approved in two thousand...
Want to be grandfathered in?
I would assume it would be, I just wanted to say that before my time started. All right, I better talk fast. The, the thing I disagree with is the, the characterization that condo hotel was created to obtain more density. I totally disagree with that. The word condominium refers only to the form of ownership. Hotel or transient is the density issue. I mean, there are condo office buildings, there are condo hotels, there are condo boat slips, there are residential condos, the, the, the other word in there defines the density. Condo defines the form of ownership, and I'm, you know, I'm, would greatly disagree with that. I just, the big factor, I appreciate that you recognize the, the central is, is a problem, because you're going to eliminate the fact that not only do individuals rent their own units, you have real estate offices that act as a central agent, and they, many of the real estate offices are dependent upon renting these units out, not just the central desks where they do exist, for example, at Madeira Bay. Next, I would want to make sure that you understand, stop and think, if you buy a unit to make use of it, and you use it for a month, or two weeks, and your kids are coming down to use it for a month, nope, can't come, they got to wait thirty days. Or, you have somebody come in for a weekend, "Oh, I want to put them in my, my condo hotel unit that I bought," nope, can't do it. Or, somebody from Europe wants to come in, they can only stay thirty days, and then they got to go back to Europe, wait thirty days, and then come back from Europe. I mean, you're going to greatly kill the sales of these units. You've got to think of this logically, and when Michelle says she's checked with other cities, "Okay, you want to be like Treasure Island? I had a fifty-two-unit condo hotel stopped about three months ago because of the regulation." You want to be like St. Pete Beach? I mean, I don't think, I think Madeira Beach has, had a clear definition of where it wants to go, and I think that restricting an owner from using it, or allowing their family to use it, is a big mistake, and I think it's going to limit our sales, I think it's going to stop some of these projects. Europeans will be out. Tampa people, you mean, they can't come across with their, and use it for a week, or two weeks, and then come back, you know, two or three weeks later? It just doesn't work, and I think you need to consider that. I got seven seconds left. Anything? That's it? Okay, thank you.
Okay, just to clarify a little bit, this is not just about one project, this is not, I just want to make sure everyone's, this is not just about Madeira Bay approval, this is the definition for all future condo hotel projects that are going to happen in the city, so it's extremely important, and I'll just tell you from the sales perspective, the points Jack just made are extremely important. So, we're going to have a, we have a huge drive-to market for tourism, for people to come to the beaches, from the Lakeland Market, from Orlando, from Tampa, from Sarah, everybody coming over to this area. And you have the Canadians, and you have the Europeans that call this, I mean, they're tourists, right? They come in town for a month or two, or maybe three, and they go back home, and they spend a lot of money here, they go to the bars, they go to the restaurants, they go to the shops, they enjoy themselves. My recommendation is for you guys to really consider amending what's going to be approved tonight, and taking away that thirty-day separation, right? Every, everyone can live with the ninety days, that's fair, that's plenty of time for an owner to use their unit, the central reservation system going away to be an optional, the fact is, most of them are going to use it anyway, but to force them doesn't make sense in today's technology with Airbnb, and VRBO, and HomeAway's, and all that. So, the only recommendation I would really urge you to strongly consider is getting rid of that thirty-day stay in between stays. It's confusing, I think it's going to be virtually impossible to police, for one, and it's going to, it just confuses everybody, and it's going to cripple the sales of these units, not just in Madeira Bay, but in every one of these other projects that are going to come around. And we have a very limited window, guys, from a strong market, I say this almost every time I'm up here, we have a beautiful market right now, and this is the time to get projects launched, and little things like this really make a difference, so please consider taking away that interval, that separation out, just completely, and just let them stay ninety days max, that's it, and that will really make big differences in the city, so, thank you, and please consider that.
Thank you, Mr. Baggins. And actually, Mr. Crawford, maybe, Mr. Ord can answer that. Who does police this? I mean, is that, I mean, does the city do that, or is the condo association, or also, once the units are all sold, can the condo association sit there and go, "Well, we want to go back to this," or they, can they, the condo association themselves change their rules and be self-governor, how, how the units are used?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and answer the question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
This is, this is a city code provision.
Right.
And so, the city code enforcement officer, in fact, the deputy sheriff, would treat it just like we would in short-term rentals.
Okay.
It's the city's obligation to prove that there's a violation of the city code, and so that's who would be doing it, would be your code enforcement deputy. So, what was your other question?
I just, once the condos are all bought, I know you have a condo association...
Oh, the condo association can't change this provision.
Okay.
This is the city code provision, and so, they're, they would have to, they would have to comply with whatever their, whatever their association provides in addition to this. So, if they're more restrictive in their own association rules and regulations, they obviously would need to comply with that more restrictive provision.
Okay, that's, that's actually, that answers my question.
Okay, we don't, we don't control any of that, or the city doesn't control any of that.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I agree, the policing of this, so to speak, would be difficult, in fact, it would be a lot similar to the short-term rental thing where we just...
That's been under twenty thousand dollars a year.
Well, they, we changed that in this budget, but, I mean, frankly, they'd have to get reported, you know, there, there would be no way that we could just dedicate somebody to this, and so, you know, if you look at number eight, and again, I don't know, and Michelle would have to answer that, that if, once we approve something, does this need to go to the county, or to the state for, you know, a, a second glance to make sure that we're legal, but, you know, if you looked at number eight, and just said, "Be available to the owner for use no more than ninety days within a calendar year, period," I think is what makes sense to get these units sold, so if, if, if you're, if you're looking to help the developers out, and get these things moving in a market that's still strong, that's probably what you, what you have to do tonight, and that gives them the flexibility to use their unit as they see fit. If you want to restrict it further, then you get back into some of that language that exists in, in number eight.
And, and not to, look, I love concrete being poured, and it's not that I want to help the developers, but what I'm really looking at is, the person that buys a unit to have the flexibility that works the best for the owner. I mean, if I, I own a condo, so, I mean, I get it, and they, a lot of people that own condos over there rent them out all the time, you have people coming and going, which there's nothing wrong with that, I just, what I don't want to see is an empty unit. If there's nobody in there, they're not spending money, they're not here, they're not, I mean, to me, I just don't want to see empty units.
Yeah, I think Mr. Boziet brings up a good point, you know, if, if I invest in a property, I want to, I want to use it when the family comes down from Wisconsin.
And no disrespect to the developer, it's just, I'm looking at what works for the person that owns it, I want the flexibility if I buy that unit, what I can do with my property.
And he brought up a good point, you know, Europeans don't vacation for thirty days at a time, Canadians don't vacation for thirty days at a time.
Not every full month.
Right, so...
Six months.
Like I said, you know, I understand the restriction, it is an investment property, it's not supposed to be their residence, they're only going to live there at a maximum one-fourth of the year, I, I think that that's, that's fair, and I think you're, you're, you're showing to the developers that you're, you're willing to bend and not break on some of this stuff, so we can get some of these projects moving while the money's still out there, and developers are still looking to spend money on large-scale projects here in town.
So, I'm still confused about the city's responsibility and the condos homeowners, whatever, they, they make the rules. So, our rules are superseding...
They cannot supersede our city code.
Wow, okay.
So, when we, when we put in all this restrictive covenant, they can't pass something to make it less restrictive.
Correct, but they can make it stronger.
They can make it more restrictive.
Not less restrictive.
Correct.
Okay.
So, I, again, I see what Tom is saying, I see what Michelle is saying, but I have to look at it and see, okay, how is Pat Crager going to enforce this? And it's just going to be responded to complaints, frankly. So, i- if you're going to manage it like that, and that's really, that's the only way that I can see being, managing it, I don't know how you could be proactive without doing what we did, hiring a deputy twenty, or eight hours a day to manage this. I just let the owner use it, and you're restricting them, they can only use it for a fourth of the year, and then for the rest of the time, they have to condo tell, or rent it out.
Yes, you can pass anything, but can you enforce it? That's, that's the issue.
That's, that's the issue that I've brought...
And you can enforce it, but it's going to cost you money to enforce it, is it worth that cost?
No, well, and why restrict the owner?
Exactly.
So, if, if, if I could be so bold, I would, you know, further amend this to change number eight to be available to the owner for use no more than ninety days within a calendar year, period, and delete the rest of section eight, and I think that gets you what you need.
Now, let me ask a question, and I get, you know, deleting the section eight, I just want to make sure this is the first reading, there is going to be a second reading on this, correct? If we do, if the commission considers passing the first reading, that it will have time to look at it, make sure that we're in compliance with the county and the state?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Commissioner List, would you like to amend your motion, or...
We can amend it on the second reading, too. You can amend it anytime, right?
Yes.
Sure we can.
Yes, you could amend it a second time.
Okay, let me leave it restrictive this time, I'll make Mr. Baggins unhappy, just for a little while, and then we'll see, let me get some more input on it, and, and talk about it, and then we can, now, if we amend it on the second reading, Tom, are we going to have a third reading?
It all depends on what you're going to take out of it, if you're making it, if you're making more of a limitation, then...
More restrictive.
More restrictive, the answer is no.
If it's less restrictive, we don't.
If it's less restrictive, and you're allowing the window to open, then, then it would require another reading.
Right, I understand.
And if, Mr. City Manager, so, just in case this all does come up, can we check with the county with, maybe if those amended items?
Yes.
What, what would be required if it is, if it is acceptable to the state and the county?
Yeah, I mean, we don't want to pass something that's not going to be...
Well, absolutely, but if it's, if it's being considered for the second time, I'd rather have those questions answered up front, instead of going another thirty days.
Absolutely, and I think we should have probably gotten to that level already, and, and maybe they come back and say, "Hey, wait a minute, you know, you guys are completely missing the boat," but...
Right.
If I understand our city attorney, if you're going to make it less restrictive at the second reading, it's going to require another reading, so then I would respectfully request that you make it less restrictive now, so we can do our checking, and then if everybody's on board with it, you can pass it at the second reading, knowing what, what we get between now and the next meeting.
Because then we can make it more restrictive at the second without...
Correct, so...
I can amend my motion to, to do that, so, I'll, I'll, I'll delete the thirty days, and I can make it more restrictive on the second reading, so, made your hand.
So, just so we're, just so we're clear, so that...
Only, only until the next reading.
All right, all right, so I see the, the clerk's phase here, you, what you're, what you're doing is removing central, keeping ninety in the first sentence of number eight, and putting a period after the word year, and deleting the rest of number eight.
Occupational license to business receipt.
Correct.
Yeah. Keeping the ninety days calendar year, and can you just take this second part of that sentence out, after the comma?
Right, you're going to make the comma a period, and the rest of that paragraph is deleted.
Okay.
So, I...
Do I have a second?
A second?
Okay, I, I need to jump in, you're deleting a portion of the ordinance that has nothing to do with, the last sentence has nothing to do with the interval aspect of it. What it has to do with this is whether or not you want to let the owner make the property available to others at intervals less than thirty days for the remainder of the calendar year. So, that's a totally separate issue than what you've just discussed, so I think that So, I think that you cover, you, what you wanna do by putting a period after the words "a calendar year" through the end of that sentence.
And leaving the third sentence out.
Leaving the third sentence, since the unit shall be available for at least, to parties other than the owner in intervals of thirty days or less for the remainder calendar of the year.
I'd agree.
So...
That's my mistake, I, you're correct.
So moved.
Okay, I just...
Second.
Thanks, Tom. Steph, okay? Is there any further comments from the commission?
Michelle has a question.
I have a comment.
Okay.
I just wanted to let you know that the ordinance as it stands now was sent to Forward Pinellas, and they did say it was consistent with the countywide plans. So, with the change that we're making, or that you're making tonight, I will, again, send them another letter, but they did say that the earlier one was approved.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Orton.
So, do you think they are gonna send you a different?
Uh, well, I don't know. I'd like to take it to them and let them make that decision. Because we are changing some wording.
Thank you, Michelle.
Is there any further comment?
Sam Lewis?
Here I am, yeah. I was the original developer of Madera Bay. We have sixty-eight units. In those sixty-eight units, there's nine people that do not use the central system. They use their own, some people own four or five units in Madera Beach and surrounding beaches. So, some of these people just like to buy these units and rent them themselves. But, a majority of the owners use the reservation system. The other thing is, i- if you, you, if you look at the usage of these units, we've got a lot of people from not only Tampa, but surrounding inland, uh, cities. They come down for the weekend, or for a week to use their units in the summertime, bring their kids in. They're tourists. I mean, they may own that unit, but they still go to restaurants and bars, and there's, there are people in those units. So, you drive through Madera Bay and look at the license plates. You, you've got people from Pinellas County renting those units on the weekend. So, why do you wanna be punitive to the owner and, and say you, you, you have to stay away for ninety days or a hundred and twenty days, when they may just wanna use it in the summertime? We, we have eighteen contracts for the forty-four units on the second building. Half of those contracts are contingent on being able to use those units on a reasonable basis. I mean, why do you wanna be punitive? Why do you wanna put that separation in there? I mean, what good does that do you as a city? It, it doesn't bring you any more revenue, doesn't do anything for you. And there are a lot of communities that don't have those separations. There may be some that do, like Treasure Island or St. Pete Beach, but what's good for them is not necessarily good for us. So, Madera Bay, it, it gets, we've got like a eighty-five percent occupancy. That means people are here, the restaurants are doing good, our partners across the street at Barefoot Beach, that they're waiting to see what happens before they figure out whether they're gonna proceed. And the, the other two properties are gonna have the same problem we're having. Uh, selling these units, people make a big investment, and they wanna know that they can use it, and they don't have to be tied to a particular central reservation system. But they've gotta get a license. They've gotta get an occupation license and a business license from the city. Even if they only own one unit, they've gotta get that license, so the city can regulate that. I mean, yeah, it'd be easier if everybody went through one thing, but easy's not always the best for the community.
And they still have to pay bad taxes, even if it's one...
They're gonna pay taxes one way or the other.
It's still, it's still, all works the same, and there is a check that balances on that.
Why be punitive because some other community does something stupid? Do we wanna do something stupid? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Lewis brings up a good point. I mean, we used to be the city that people look to. We don't, we don't usually go following, looking for bad practice, and so, uh, we, we, we as a staff will, will certainly do a little bit better job of, of getting together and getting some information, too, so there isn't, you know, a, a combative, uh, combative type recommendation from staff. But i- in this instance, there, I think the, this is clear now, whether or not we can send this on to Forward Pinellas and get their blessing, that, that's another story, but we'll certainly do that, and if not, then we'll have to react to that. But, in the meantime, I, I, I think, considering where we're at and the, the market, I, I don't see where you have much of a choice. It's, it's time to get moving. Gotta be able to pre-sell some units, otherwise they're not gonna build any buildings.
Is there any further comment from the commission?
So, we've taken up all the restrictions.
Mr. Lewis, you've already spoken once on this subject.
We've taken off all the restrictions except for the ninety days, right?
But if you put it off for thirty days, that's thirty to sixty days if we're not gonna be able to sell it. So, that's a delay in that project.
Okay, I got you.
Oh, the, there, the, this has to be read by city policy twice, so, I mean, we, we do have that, that, that thirty days has got to a lapse, so, it, within that thirty days, we'll forward this on, make sure that it's not, it's okay, and if it's not, then we'll have to come back and...
And I think last time we got a response from, uh, Pinellas, from the county in about two weeks.
It'll come before... We'll, we'll definitely be ready by the next meeting.
It was five?
Yeah.
Five days.
Five days, wow, okay, 'cause I thought the first time was gonna be about two months, so, uh, five days was outside.
We'll be ready by the next meeting.
We'll make a little call up there.
And we have Bill Carnes.
Oh, my God. Start the clock.
It's nine thirty.
Just start the clock.
You have two minutes.
He only gives them two minutes. Thirty seconds.
I only need thirty seconds, I think, uh...
Thank God.
I listened to everyone's comments. I think the, the key thing on, on, uh, the property itself is these are tourist dwellings. These are units that the owners can only use for a maximum of ninety days a year, so they are tourist dwellings. The, the second thing, I think, and everybody really hit the nail on the head, you know, there's slow seasons, and if, if I live in Tampa and I wanna come over and, and use my unit, and I know it's not gonna be rented out for, I don't know, let's say, October, you know, it's a pretty s- slow month around here. I wanna come back, I wanna have my kids come down and use the unit. I think the thirty days is, uh, it shouldn't even come into play at all, because they only get ninety days maximum. It's not a residential unit, it's a tourist dwelling. And I think that's the big point, that, uh, that it is a tourist dwelling, and, and I don't see any reason why they'd have to leave for thirty days, um, to use a unit that they own, but it's an investment property, so it's certainly not their residence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carnes. And actually, uh, Mr. Carnes, you bring up great, because, uh, you know, looking at tourism and the number of days, and, and looking at that, that was a perfect example, the September date, you wanna keep these places full, so it helps the local businesses. 'Cause, I mean, when I sit here and watch our businesses, especially in this, and this is it, we're in it right now, go, it's getting ready to be big time season, but that September, October time is, uh, the time we really need to see people in units. So, I mean, the, the getaway with some of this downtime would be fantastic and keep units full. And with that, is there any further comments from the commission? Nothing else, Bill?
No.
You don't get to say anything else, Mr. Lewis. Uh, Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gojavi?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Yes, next, ordinance two thousand sixteen dash fifteen. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Ordinance two thousand sixteen dash fifteen. An ordinance of the city of Madera Beach, Florida, calling for a general municipal election on March fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, for the purpose of electing a commissioner for District Three, a commissioner for District Four, and a mayor. Providing authorization for the city clerk to sign contract with the Pinellas County Supervisor of Elections, providing for publication, authorizing election expenditures, identifying the Pinellas County Canvassing Board as the canvassing board for the March fourteenth, two thousand seventeen election, authorizing for a runoff election if necessary, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with, to the extent of such conflict, and providing for an effective date. That was reading of ordinance two thousand sixteen dash fifteen by title only.
At this time, we'll undertake a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Is there any comments from staff?
Recommendation for approval?
Is there any further comments? Any comments from the commission?
No comments.
Madam City Clerk?
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gojavi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
All right, next, ordinance two thousand sixteen dash sixteen. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Ordinance two thousand sixteen dash sixteen. An ordinance of the city of Madera Beach, Florida, repealing Chapter seventy-four vehicles for hire, and providing for an effective date. That was reading of ordinance two thousand sixteen dash sixteen by title only.
At this time, we'll undertake a motion.
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a, uh, motion to approve ordinance, uh, two thousand sixteen dash sixteen.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Is there any comments from staff?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I spoke to the city attorney prior to this meeting, just for sake of total disclosure, 'cause it's, it's out on the internet now with, I think, who we coined tonight were the Crawford detractors, is, this was brought up to both the city manager and the city attorney when their, a review of the ordinances was done by your city clerk. And what this does basically is, says that we're going to regulate vehicles for hire, which would mean that we would have somebody on staff inspecting taxi cabs, making sure the airbags work, making sure their seat belts work, so on and so forth. It's a regulation that we've never had in place, I, well, never enforced, as long, and I think Amy's one of our most tenured employees.
Twenty years ago.
Twenty-some years. So, she recommended to the city attorney a- and to me to have it removed, which I concurred with. However, there's a popular opinion in the community, um, I have a tiny little side business that I run at a huge financial deficit every month, that I think just adds to the little bit of the ambiance of Madera Beach. It's affectionately called the Hippie Hopper, but it's been recoined as the city manager's drunk bus. And, uh, the Hippie Hopper is a fun little vehicle. You can, uh, take a, take, take to a bar, which you can take to a concert here in the park, you can take it anywhere you want, all you have to do is tip the driver, and it's a neat little tiki bar on wheels kinda thing. So, uh, the, uh, conspiracy theory was that we were eliminating Uber and taxi cabs and all sorts of mass transportation in Madera Beach, and the Hippie Hopper was going to be the only means of transportation, thus creating a new revenue stream for the city manager to either line his pockets with, or possibly have his girlfriend run, or whatever. So, I don't know exactly what that was, but it's literally all over the internet, uh, Madera Beach United, so on and so forth. So, I just wanted, in full disclosure, this has absolutely nothing to do with the little bit of a vehicle you can rent.
So, twenty years ago, you figured this out and did this, and you created the Hippie Hopper twenty years ago, and so we'd be to this point?
I'm a really good planner, Mayor.
So, what, were you seventeen when you did this?
Nineteen.
You, you are a genius. I, I, I'm sorry.
All right.
And Shane, I, I actually saw that, and it's ridiculous, and ladies and gentlemen, this was something brought up by the city clerk, and it is something that's been on the books. And does the county, I think, at some point, need to do something to regulate it, but it needs to be done at the county level, not the municipality level?
Right.
Yeah, I asked the city attorney months ago to review this, 'cause it's an antiquated...
Unless you're that smart twenty years ago.
No, it's just, I just wanted to be sure that it's, they're not related at all, and again, the, the regulation, again, comes down to monitoring their vehicles, so on and so forth. If I'm bigger than the taxi unions and Uber, then, then they're right, I need to go look for another job, so...
Okay. I think I did ask for a motion on that.
Yes.
And is there any further comment? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gojavi?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
All right, reports and correspondence. Does any commissioners have any reports or correspondence?
Mr. Mayor, uh, as you know, I live in Snug Harbor, and, uh, to be able to go towards the beach, you would have to basically drive east before you can make a U-turn and go west. And, um, apparently, one of our residents had been warned because he had made a U-turn. Typically, I had been taking, made a right turn and made another right turn into the Marina area, and I used the front portion of the gate as like a cul-de-sac, and, uh, made a turn there, and then crossed the Hundred Fiftieth and made a left turn. So, I'm working with our captain, with your hall's permission, to maybe come up with some sort of solution that, uh, a residence won't be, uh, you know, a solution where it's safe and legal, so a residence won't be warned or given a ticket to.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I spoke to, uh, Commissioner Gavai at, at the break, and I told him, you and I had been working on this for, for years. Commissioner, just so that you're aware, A, I talked to the deputy in question, B, I saw the video. It was just one big three-hundred-and-sixty-degree turn. It wasn't, I entered the Marina, I turned my car around in a Y fashion, and then exited the Marina. He definitely, it was definitely a violation.
Illegal turn, yes.
Correct. So, I mean, I think it might just come down to a little education with people in Snug Harbor, that if you do wanna go westbound, or, yeah, westbound right now, you'd have to literally enter the Marina section somehow, turn around, and then exit legally. Um, but I did have a conversation with him and let him know that politically, it's, it's a sensitive situation, and if I lived in there and I wanted to go west, I'd be irritated every time I had to pull out of that driveway. So, I'll work with Pat Crager, you, I've given you permission to work with him directly, but he's definitely the guy to talk to about that, and we'll see if we can't come up with some solution. That being said, FDOT's gonna say we're not gonna wanna do a lot of work to this because of the impending projects, and they're gonna be spending money out there anyway, so it's gonna be difficult, but I think we can just handle it from an enforcement standpoint, possibly, that, to at least please people until we decide, or till we find out whether or not these developments are going to occur.
And, uh...
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I can go and let you know, and I'm sure the city manager will, uh, concur on this. I mean, we have, uh, gone over there, worked with condos, we've actually brought, uh, DOT in there, uh, you know, everybody under the sun, trying to get a turn lane in there, and we haven't had much luck, and I, and I got to admit, Senator Brandis is doing a we haven't had much luck and I got to admit Senator Brandis is doing a fantastic job working actually for a signal in there, trying to get us a permit for a signal in there right now.
The real problem, Commissioner Gavari, is at nighttime when there's less traffic, people try to cheat the system and make that left turn and kind of go down the wrong way and get over on the island and then go westbound. I've seen it, I've done it. So it's, it is an issue and I think we need to take a look at it and I think Pat Crager's probably the guy to start with, so maybe whenever you want, you don't need me around, feel free to work with him directly, but I'll be happy to participate too.
Okay, thank you.
So you made it, you've done it.
I've done it. That's that one, not in the hippie hopper. Sorry.
It'd be juicier for the internet if you did it in the hippie hopper though.
Oh, you're going to give me another ethics complaint.
I'm working on it. Okay. Any other commissioners laying reports?
Just got a comment. I had a constituent come to my house and talk to me about dogs in John's Pass. He was walking his dogs in John's Pass and was asked to leave John's Pass. And I know that we've tried to go forward with letting dogs at the Brown Boxer and several of our other places where, you know, people eat to take their dogs in, and so I think we need to revisit that at our workshop about the ordinance that, dogs in John's Pass, if we could.
That's an issue, Mr. Mayor, and I agree with you, Commissioner. Amy, if you can maybe make a note of that, I think the intent was to just keep dogs off the boardwalk and I think we had an issue with that because dogs do certain things when they smell other dogs and there's people underneath that boardwalk. However, in John's Pass where there's no risk of anybody being underneath, I think we could maybe take a look at changing that. So when people talk to me about it, I said, you know, the board will probably consider dogs in John's Pass, but you have to shy away from the boardwalk for obvious reasons and so people are aware that we're going to take a look at that, so it's probably time to, time to agendize that one.
And yeah, Madam City Clerk, can you put that on the agenda for the next, because I know we didn't have an agenda setting meeting, so if that works for you, Commissioner Lister.
So you want to work, you want a workshop, correct?
I mean, can we, can we just put that on the next available workshop? I'd hate to, that would be the only reason to have a workshop.
Yeah, no, no, that's why, if that's okay with Commissioner Lister, or actually, I don't mind discussing it if we, for our next commission meeting.
I was just going to say, you know, whenever we just have-
I don't think it'd take longer than a half an hour to discuss this.
Right, whenever we just have one or two issues, if you don't mind, it's easier on staff if we just have a special workshop before the BOC meeting, that way you're coming in one last time, otherwise it is, putting a packet together and that type of thing is a very tedious, time-consuming issue and it sounds silly and we're not complaining, but it's a pain for everybody involved if we can just do it like that. When we have a full agenda, obviously, we'll have our normal workshop, but when it's just one or two.
And it's very important on the dogs and I'm glad Commissioner Lister brought that up and I know it's getting late, but you know, Mr. City Manager, you gave me a little bit of cane about the dog park over here, do you notice how full that is all the time?
It's packed.
I know.
Got a lot of positive responses from that people, remember you're enjoying the dog park.
And Dave's department's working very hard on getting some dog amusement toys out there.
Why don't you just take some of the collapsed stormwater drains and put it out there for the dogs to run through, you're killing two, you know, two birds with one stone. Yeah, you're on it. And the lights at the, you're working. No. Oh, no, I'm complimenting you, brother. I'm not, I live across the street, I see it, so. Alright, guys, it's getting late, sorry about that. And Mr. City Attorney?
Want to talk to you about one thing. About three weeks ago, I sent you a memo on the property located at three forty, Hundred Twenty-Ninth Avenue East. This was a special magistrate code enforcement case against Tyrone J. Scott. The city was successful in prosecuting that case and the special magistrate entered an order requiring the violator to pay two hundred and fifty dollars a day for eighty-seven days of violation in addition to about two thousand dollars in cost for the special magistrate to hear the matter. There's a total due to the city in that case, twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Subsequent to the entry of the order, there was a motion for reconsideration, rehearing that was filed in the case. That has kind of been staying in an open status. While the city considers settling the case, we did receive an offer of settlement in the amount of eleven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and nineteen cents, which is basically fifty percent of what was owed. In full satisfaction of the outstanding lien, it's my recommendation to accept this almost twelve thousand dollar offer to get the check in the city's hand and we can close this case out. If we were to move forward, we would need to set for hearing the motion for reconsideration before the special magistrate bring Mr. Langford back and then have his expenses and costs as well as the city attorney's hourly rate on addressing that motion for reconsideration, so it'd probably be another couple thousand dollars to bring it back for hearing. So I'm recommending your acceptance of eleven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and nineteen cents in full satisfaction of the lien that's on this property. And so I would ask for you to give me that authorization tonight if that's acceptable.
Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
Yes, absolutely.
Need a formal motion or you can do it on a consensus?
No, I would request a motion to be made.
At this time, I'll undertake a motion for the city, the approval of the city attorney's-
I'm sorry, was it eleven thousand, eight hundred and nineteen, eleven?
It's eleven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and nineteen cents.
That amount right there. I want to make a motion that we get that amount.
Eleven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and nineteen cents?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three, so.
Nineteen cents.
Nice second.
Got motion, second. Is there any discussion from the commission?
No comments.
Is there any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Vice Mayor Kohavi?
Yes. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Shane, you've talked to him enough tonight, I know you're going to ask you for any updates or reports.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just got a couple of quick ones on. Today, I received an email and will embarrass him at a future meeting, but Vince was able to receive the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for, I believe that's our fifth one in a row, and I know the mayor and Terry love financial statistics, so he increased our annual interest earnings for the city by a certain percentage and I'll give everybody one guess real quick. Terry Lister, what's your guess? Come on, I'll play him.
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent, that's way too low. Nancy, what's your, fifty was too low, it's got to be higher than fifty.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five is too low. Mr. Mayor?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven's too low. Who should get the big one?
Hundred and ten.
Four hundred and fifty-three percent.
Holy smoke.
So that's a pretty interesting statistic, so the kid crushed it as usual, so.
He's going to buy the hippie hopper.
Right, it's for sale, let me tell you. So with that, again, A, I appreciate all your support tonight, I think it's time that we, you know, take control of our own town. I think it's being pushed around by a certain individual that doesn't even reside here and I think a lot of our own citizens are taking some bad advice and so I appreciate the unified front tonight. I might have to be making some changes within City Hall, you know, there was some information that was purposely let out that was obviously broadcasted all over the internet, so I do have a leak in City Hall, I don't know if it's the volunteer desk or on payroll, but I'm definitely going to be looking at making some changes. I'll definitely run those by the board when I have to, but again, I think it's times like this where we have to come together and I saw it tonight and, you know, I was the focus of it and I appreciate it all, but I mean, we're not out of the woods yet, we got a lot of lawsuits to defend and a lot of things, a lot of hard decision-making to do, so again, thank you and that's all I have.
Thank you, and actually, just if it's okay with the city attorney and I know I had a conversation with you earlier on, there was a hearing for-
Summary judgment.
Summary judgment. And if you would let the commission know what you told me, I believe a part of that day actually even, the other side actually dismissed from their case?
Yeah, this motion for summary judgment was scheduled for this past week and Jay did a hell of a job presenting the city's position. The other side also presented their motion for summary judgment, but the day before the hearing, the night before the hearing, it was late, the plaintiffs in the lawsuit actually dismissed part of their lawsuit, their challenge to, I think it was ordinance twenty fifteen dash zero eight, I think is the correct title to it, so you can consider that as prevailing, at least on that portion of it. It's my understanding that the judge heard the arguments and he has requested each side to provide him with recommended orders and I believe that that date is October twenty-eighth, when those recommended orders will be provided to the judge and then hopefully soon thereafter, the judge will make a decision.